Work session for the Coffee County Board of Education. We have a pretty long agenda tonight, so we're probably gonna talk about the school letter grades, and then we're gonna take a quick break to grab something to eat, and then we'll dive into the rest of our agenda. So without further ado, we can dive in. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna talk about letter grades here, and Dr. Blessing is gonna do a presentation for us on the overall. And we decided, well, Dr. Crabtree offered to come in and talk about Hickerson's letter scores, so we decided maybe to get another couple of the other schools in to talk. And just so you know, it's not the Spanish Inquisition here, so we're trying to get an understanding of how the letter scores come about at the different schools, and how the board can help. So we're looking for suggestions on how we can work better with you to, you know, get these scores up. I mean, the state is starting to put some pressure on these letter grades, and there's actually a bill in the legislature right now that will actually provide more funding for schools, for districts that have letter, schools that have 50% of schools with A or above, there will actually be additional funding. And there's also some, you know, carrot and stick, there's also the stick side of things that's coming from the state, too. So we're trying to get an understanding, and so we appreciate you coming and educating us on that, too. So with that, Dr. Blessing, you're up first.
Actually, I think Ms. Cole is up first.
Oh, Ms., okay, well.
It's under presentation?
Yeah, all right.
Good afternoon. I'm Krista Cole, Director of Federal Programs, and I want to talk to you a few minutes about Title I and the program in Coffee County schools. So some of you were here several months ago when I talked about preliminary allocations. And I told you all, I'll give you an update when I get an update. And the interesting thing is, I just received some numbers a few weeks ago, so I haven't given you an update because I haven't had any information to share until now. But what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to talk about what Title I is, just for those of you who may not be sure about what Title I is. Then I'll talk about where we are right now, and then where we're going, or where we're headed, to the best of my ability. First of all, Title I is federal funding, and it provides funding to schools with high percentages of low-income students. So it's that simple. But the purpose is to supplement, so go above and beyond, and give additional opportunities to provide students with quality education, and help close the gap. So that's Title I in a nutshell. When it comes to funding, schools are eligible to be Title I, school-wide schools, if they have 40% or higher of low-income students. And we typically define that free and reduced students. That's based on our census. But that's how you qualify for Title I funding. So truth be known, every school in our district could qualify for Title I funding, right? We're all above 40%, but if we served every school, we would run out of funding. We would run out of money and not be able to make a difference maybe at any of our schools, because the funding would be so little. So schools are ranked by poverty level to determine the fund distribution. So it would be so much easier if all the schools were Title I, and we could give them exactly what we need, what we needed, or what they needed to have maybe two teachers at each school. That's not the way it works. So we have to rank order them. There are some examples of allowable uses that I included. I highlighted instructional support, because that's what we do in Coffee County. And that's probably what many school districts do, is they use their funding for personnel, because I will put people over products, and things, and supplies, and technology any day. So that's what we do. We have our money in intervention teachers. Now, we also have some money in professional development. Family engagement is a requirement. And then there's supplemental instructional materials, software, and technology. So that's the basis of some allowable excuses, uses. There are more, but that's what we focus on. But the majority of the funding goes to, goes towards our teachers. And all of our elementary schools are Title I schools. Like I said, the rest could be eligible, but we run out of money. Any questions so far? All right. So this gives you some trend data from '22, '23. And so you may notice, we've gone down just a little bit the past few years. It's been all over the place, but I just shared this with you. Now, the information I got a few weeks ago, the first of February, it was only '24 and '25. We do not have allocations for '25, '26. And I'm speculating that it will not come until maybe April. That's, it just gets later all the time. So that's where we are. But I want you to see the trends so far.
Is this direct federal funding? So this comes directly from the feds?
To the state, to the district, yes.
Okay, so.
It goes to the states, and the states distribute it.
Goes to the state first, and then the, okay.
Yes, it does not come directly to the districts.
Okay.
Good question. So I wanted to show you this chart. What I don't have on here, because it started to look complicated when I added all the numbers, I don't have all the budgets, the allocations by each one, but I could share those with you. But if you remember, the last time I spoke about Title I, I was concerned about the final allocations, because there have been times when they'll give us a budget, and we'll drop tens of thousands of dollars, and that's a scary place to be. So the final came in about three weeks ago, and we, I consider ourselves very fortunate, because we didn't lose like other districts lost. So this just lets you know, I have the federal program listed in the left column with the purpose in the middle. This is very generic in general, but it gives you an idea. But for instance, we only lost $40 in Title I, from the number they gave us last spring to three weeks ago. So I consider ourselves very fortunate. We had districts that I know of that lost anywhere from about $25 to $43,000. And those are just the ones I know of. I don't know of but a handful. So we are very fortunate. Teacher quality, that's Title II-A. We actually received $1,500 more. Title III, $300 more. Title IV is surprising, it stayed the same. And then you see IDEA, Students with Disabilities. We lost 4,000 there, and lost roughly 100 or less in pre-K students with disabilities. So overall, not a terrible picture compared to how it's been with other systems and how it's been in the past. Any questions on that one? So just to give you an idea, Title I's roughly $1.1 million budget. Title II-A's roughly a $200,000 budget. Title III's roughly an $18,000 budget. Title IV is roughly a $70,000 budget. IDEA, I believe that's one of our largest ones now, and that's about $1.1 million. And then pre-IDE, pre-K's about a $35,000 budget. So it's all over the place.
Well, just as far as budget's going, and maybe Ms. Nelson can answer this one, too, but we have a separate budget for Title I. That's 402?
101.
101?
So 142, all of these grants lie within 142, and then they all have separate sub-funds. So like, it'd be 142-101, 142-201. So all of these fall within the federal, not within the 141 budget, but within the 142.
Okay.
And that's not on any of the reports that you guys see.
Right, right.
So I shared this with you, just to let you know, we came out better than what was anticipated and expected. Okay, so this is kind of where we're headed. And this is a scenario. This is, this is not, these are not firm numbers, because we don't even have an allocation for next year yet. And we won't have one for a little bit. But we'll talk about that in a second. Ms. Nelson has been amazing to work with. She and I work together, and we talk about how different things we can do, and how we can make this work for next year. And so she pulled some figures and some numbers based on current personnel, based on salary steps for next year, to let me know. This is about what we're gonna need in personnel and parent involvement. Parent involvement is required. We're required to spend at least 1% of the budget on parent involvement, so that's roughly $10,000. So this is what we're gonna need. Now, you notice I highlighted hypothetical. I do not know our allocation, but you remember that trends chart that I showed you where we decreased $15,000, $16,000? I just took the number we had, and I decreased it by about $15,000, just in case that number stayed with the trend. So the difference, based on what we'll have compared to what we need, is about $123,000, based on my hypothetical allocation. Just remember, it's fictitious at this point. Now, if there happens to be a 3% raise, for instance, I just threw that in there, too. I don't know, and you all haven't decided either, but that would be about a $151,000 deficit for Title I. So that's kind of where we are with Title I. Any questions on that? Does that make sense? I tried to put that in a way where it would be simple to understand if I did that correctly.
The hypothetical situation holds true, then we're gonna be, at this point in time, what, $275,000?
No, no.
121, 123?
We're not adding those together. We'll just, it'll be 151, based on a 3% raise. But you know what? This is based on the same personnel, because people range in experiences, and degrees, and so all that is based on a hypothetical allocation. We're not sure what's gonna happen with benefits and medical, so there's a lot of what-ifs. But I think this is a pretty good indication. It gives you a picture of what we're looking at.
That would mean that it'd be personnel cuts, wouldn't it?
Well, maybe, maybe not. So what I've done on this next page is talk about, so what can we do? And Ms. Nelson and I have talked about this, and we've looked at possible solutions. So the good news is, and the way we survived and did as well as we did this year, is last year, you may remember that I talked about transferring money out of Title IV. It was just another title. It is allowable for us to transfer funds, and we don't have people in that fund, because I've been told in the past with such a small budget, and you shouldn't rely on people for your Title IV budget, because it's all over the place. So what I've done is I've transferred, and I'm gonna keep doing that. I'm gonna keep transferring that Title IV funding into Title I. Now, Title IV, remember, that's about a $70-ish thousand budget. We're not sure what's gonna happen next year. I like to keep a little bit back for some professional development needs, for some substitute needs, for some summer school stipends for the high school. Keep just enough to get that done, and I'm gonna put the rest of it in Title I, to see how long we can keep stretching this out. And then if there's any carryover in Title IV for this year, that'll go in, too. So last year, I ended up transferring about $106,000 out of Title IV. It was a great support for Title I. And so since I was able to transfer that much money in Title I for this year, I'm gonna have some Title I carryover, which is great. So I will use remaining carryover in Title I, because we had that nice transfer in Title IV. But just to keep this in your back pocket, that amount of carryover will not maintain, right? Because in the past, we weren't transferring in Title IV, I mean, Title I. Now, since we're transferring, it's getting spent. It's getting spent on personnel. So we've got a couple good options here, with Title IV original budget going in, Title I, Title IV carryover, using any carryover in Title I. So those are some ways that's gonna help balance the budget. I'm not saying it's gonna completely balance, but it will help. Another solution is the support of general school's budget to address any funding gaps. And then the last option on there is the loss of personnel. So that's kind of where we are.
Ms. Cole, what is Title IV for? What is it?
That is the well-rounded education. It's pretty flexible. If you remember, we had Title V years and years ago. It's flexible, it reminds me of the flexibility of Title V. We're Title I, there's so many strings attached, but Title IV can be well-rounded, safe and healthy, so safety and security, and it can go forth with some technology as well. And so transferring into Title I would fall under that well-rounded, and absolutely is covered with, by law.
So what we're talking about now is next year, because we don't know what's beyond that.
Yeah, we're good this year. We're good this year.
But when we start running out of rabbits in the hat, then we start looking at transferring from the 141 to the 142? How does that process work?
So we wouldn't particularly do that. What we would do is, we would, general school would pick up a percentage of their salaries, whatever we could do to help meet that gap. So like, for example, we could pay them 90% federal, 10% general. We have some employees that we currently do that with, not very many, but we do. But then also, but keep in mind, that once we do that, it has to remain that way forever. Because once you, what is the word? It's not methodology, it's...
It's planning.
That's correct.
But, so, we have a new consultant now, and we've been talking to the consultant, and the consultant mentioned that we were exempt from methodology, and so we need to get some more information on that. But we have options. We have options. And so I wanted to leave you with this. The federal funding solutions that we have in place, will that be enough? This is to sustain Title I for one more year? And this is the answer you probably don't want to hear, is maybe, but it depends. And it depends on a lot of things. It's those things that I mentioned. It depends on, what's our Title I allocation for next year? If it goes up $50,000, we're in a good place. If it decreases $50,000, we're not in a good place, because remember that hypothetical I gave you? It was just a 16,000 increase, a decrease. It's gonna depend on Title IV allocations, because that will determine how much I can actually transfer over into Title I. And I'm hoping it's healthy. Other things, other factors, you know, if there's any kind of salary or benefit increases. And I wanted to throw this one in, potential federal sequestration. I don't know if you all remember, this was years ago, when out of nowhere, budgets were cut across different departments, and education was one of them. And we lost, we lost significantly, and a lot of districts did. But just in, in, in listening to podcasts and those things, I heard that word mentioned one time, and I just want to throw that out there. That could happen. It could happen any year. We're just in unprecedented times right now. So that's Title I in a nutshell. I think we spend money efficiently and effectively, and we're not wasteful. We're very cautious on how we spend money, but we believe putting it in people is the best investment for our students.
Well, if your projections are correct, or somewhere in the ballpark, we should probably be okay for this year, but beyond that?
Like, the probably is about the strongest word I can use for this, because, and Ms. Nelson and I will continue to talk to see, when the numbers come down, what else we can do. But I'm trying not to ask general school's budget for anything. I don't want to need to do that. I want to try to figure it out another way, so.
Kristin, what did we do with the Title IV before we started pulling it out of it?
So Title IV helped with early post-secondary opportunities at the high school. So any type of AP prep, Advanced Placement prep, ACT prep, any kind of ACT programs to help them. It also has gone for summer school, paying teachers to support summer school in 9 through 12. It's gone for after-school tutoring and ELA and math. And so it's gone to help support safety, health and safety, with conferences, with Ms. Tanya Garner, with the counselors. And so just a variety, because it's so flexible, we can do those things. And so we will not be able to do some of them.
That's what I was saying, is trying to get kind of a overlook of what we would be losing if we took it out of the Title IV.
I will say, Ms. Nelson and I have had these conversations, and she has been great to work with to say, maybe we can do this, or we can do this. And so we've been having lots of discussions, because we don't want our kids to lose out.
Sure, and neither do we. That's the reason why I'm asking. So if we do that, then we're gonna be losing from someplace else. If we're paying Peter to pay Paul, then we're gonna...
I think we can make it work. I think we can make it work with some TESA outcome bonus funding, to pick up, to help pay for some stipends for tutoring and summer school. I think that that's gonna help with that.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll just have to scale back, maybe on some professional development. I know we did that this year. We used to send counselors and PE teachers to different places for professional development. Not much, but we did. But we've scaled back. We'll send just representatives now.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, good question.
And if there's less money coming in, something's gotta give.
And that's the reason I wanted to, for everybody to kind of hear what we're gonna be losing. If we take from Title IV, if we have to, then this is what we're gonna be losing.
And something else, I'm glad you mentioned that. Something else that we're not doing this year, that we did last year, is this year, we've had a focus on math tutoring after school for 9 through 12.
Yes, ma'am.
In the years past, we've had math, ELA, and science. So we were able to expand it, but we're condensing, because like you said, something has to give.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, I know at one time Title I paid for instructional coordinators or assistant principals at elementary schools. Do they, is that still coming out of Title I, or is it general schools?
That's general schools. It's been out of general schools for many years. So we're...
So general schools picked up all that?
Yes, ma'am. So Title I pays for intervention teachers now at the school sites. Any other questions?
Oh, and I was understanding that y'all couldn't go out state for professional development.
I think that's been an in-house, in-house...
So hopefully that will go away, because you can't just concentrate on what's in Tennessee.
Because with the funding, you know, there was Esther funding.
I mean, not Title I required that, but the previous administration.
Right, I know with Title I, when we started losing funding, we needed to put a cap on that, too, because once again, something had to give. But yes, you're right. We've been very limited on that.
Any other questions? And I apologize, because you weren't on the agenda. I was anticipating you were gonna be on the agenda for the March Board meeting, so...
Oh, okay.
But thanks for coming in and doing this, because we definitely wanted to be updated.
I wish I could give you firm numbers. I just, I'm giving you all I have.
A lot of stuff in flux right now.
Krista, you mentioned summer school. Did the elementary school summer school funding exist?
No, ma'am. It's just the high school. So there's state, there's other funding for elementary through middle school, and not for high school, and so we do, for high school only. Good question.
We get a state grant, usually around May, to cover summer school for elementary.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
That was...
Good job, Krista.
Thank you.
Good job.
I know a lot more now than I did at the start of the meeting. All right, now we have Dr. Blessing, who's gonna talk about the letter grades and...
Yes, I'm just trying to get the technology handed off.
There's always that.
School letter designations. This is the second year that the state has issued letter grades for schools, even though the law requiring that said, start in 2016. But there was COVID, there was this, there was that, till finally they got it in place. There are two models for school letter grades. There are schools that are called K-8, and then there's high school. And each one has a different distribution. Achievement counts 50% in both of them. Growth is 40% in K-8. It's still 40% here, but it's split. And then growth for the lowest 25, we see 10% here, it's 10%. But there's a category here for high school called college and career ready. So two different pools. In order to figure out what pool you're in, there's a guideline. If you have fewer than 30 students in the most recent graduating cohort, you're in the K-8 pool, even if you don't have K-8 students. Our Rider Academy is in the K-8 pool, because they don't have graduating students at all. And they don't give ACT. They didn't mention that. So again, we see again that 30 for whatever, that was the cutoff that they had. This is a little different, and I'm gonna make sure this is clear. The state of Tennessee has its own accountability system, and that's called the school letter grades. Federally, there's a different accountability system. And federally, they only count English and math. But for achievement with the school letter grades, they count everything. So you'll see English, math, science, and social studies. There's a term up here some of you may have heard in the past called MSAA. M is multi-subject assessment. They've changed away from that, but the state still uses that title. Now it's called DLM. I don't know why they use that. And they have, they're still using TCAP-ALP, that's still a term they're using. But MSAA are for those significantly cognitively delayed students, and it's only English and math. So if you're looking at this, and they're using all this, well, first of all, we do not do integrated math. We do Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. They cover the same standards, it's just they split them up differently. So, but we use the traditional one. There's heavier weights for ELA and math than for Science and Social Studies, and we'll see those weights here in a minute. And there are different calculations for the different grade bands. There's a 3-5 band, there's a 6-8 band, there's a 9-12 band. And I could say a rock and roll band, but that wouldn't fit, would it? So when you look at these subject weights, you'll see for 3-5, a success rate, you have 40% ELA, 40% math, 20% science. For 6-8, you'll notice Social Studies doesn't live over here, because they're not giving a Social Studies test for grades 3-5. It's been on pause for several years now, and I don't see it being revived unless the state changes its mind. But we do have Social Studies for 6-8. So you'll see, they took 5% from each of these, and five here, and they made their Social Studies. So 35, 35, 15, and 15. And for 9-12, it's a different sort of creature. All the students in grades 3-5 take these three tests. All the students in grade 6-8 take these four tests. But for 9-12, only if you're enrolled in Algebra I do you take the Algebra I test. Only if you're enrolled in Biology do you take the Biology test. So it's not every student in the building. There's some things here, some terms are used, like 9-12 success without substitution and with substitution. Those terms are used for people, for instance, instead of taking Biology, they took AP Biology. Instead of taking US History, they're taking state dual-credit US History. We have never had enough students in the substitution category to make a difference. So ours are always, to this point, without substitution. But the state is sort of kind. We don't hear that term applied to the state very often, but they calculate it both ways, and they give us the better of the two. It's the same way with, with grade three, when they talk about retention. They do a couple of different calculations, and they'll say, which one benefits the system more, and that's the one they'll use, that they'll apply. This chart, I pulled this out from a state presentation. These red circles are not meaning anything for us. It was part of an example. But what I want to show to you is this. You earn points, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. This tells you, if your success rate for grade three was within this band, then you would earn a 1. If it was here, you would earn a 4. And you'll notice the bands are different for the different categories. So that's why the state provided this table, to let people know, okay, we're not just pulling this out of the air. You got a 3 because this, you got a 1 because that, you got a 5 because... So they have these available. Also, and there's another category for growth, and this is from Tvos, and it's all the subjects combined. They call it composite, because again, you may remember in going through, we talked about literacy. There's numeracy, there's literacy and numeracy, there's science, there's social studies. They're saying everything... They're saying everything that you took that counted combines to a single composite, and that's growth. Growth 25, we saw that a few minutes ago. That means your lowest 25% in a subject category. And they're saying, okay, how did your students grow overall as a composite? And how did your bottom 25% grow as a composite? And it lists again for your benefit, these are subjects that are used. There are some, some exceptions. For whatever reason, well, I know the reason. Grade three and grade four science tests don't count. The state says those tests aren't long enough to generate growth data. And that we don't wanna make them longer, do we? No. So, uh, and you don't do any growth for substitutional courses or tests. And you also don't do it for TCAP alt assessments. There's no growth associated with the alternate assessments. And there's, there are 50% rule. These are for students who transfer in, transfer out. If a student transfers into us and we have them for 50% or more, they count for us. If it's less than 50%, they count for where they came from, if it was a Tennessee school. If it's exactly 50%, it counts for both of them. So... This is that CCR, college and career ready indicator, talked about. These, again, are determined by certain values. For instance, how they do in the ACT. If they scored a certain score, is it 21, I think, or higher, that counts for us. Or if they have taken the ASVAB test and they made a certain score on a certain subpart, then that counts for us. If they are in a industry certification program and they've taken these classes and they've taken the test and they've passed the test, they get a certificate, that counts for us. All of those options are used, and they come up with a success rate. Basically, they call it a cut score, but I'll call it a success rate. And if we had, for instance, 36% who fell into that, we would earn a 2 in that category. So, again, all of these tables are available. But you know, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of values, and sometimes it's, it's challenging to keep them all straight. I do wanna point out 21, 22, they had to start somewhere. And the somewhere to keep baseline data was the 21, 22 school year. So, they're comparing, until the state changes that, which again, I don't know. After maybe a certain band, they'll change the baseline. I don't know if that means they're gonna change our cut scores, but right now, they're doing the 21, 22 data as a base. This is, we, we've seen this before. What I wanna point out to you here is at the very bottom. We've been seeing cut scores changing to a scale of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. What they then do is do some averaging based on the weights. And they've come up with a scale, again, from 1 to 5 here. But this tells you, if you have a score of A, that means you had to have an average of 4.5 to 5. If it was a B, a 3.5 to 4.4, and all the way down to the F, which is a 1.0 to a 1.4. These scales are not equally distributed. There's only four tenths of a point here for F, there's only five tenths of a point here for A, but the rest of them seems to be like 1. So, again, that's just the, the way it's distributed. Now, I wanna take, and by the way, please feel free to ask questions along the way. It's never a problem. I can ignore them? No, I won't. I would not do that. But this is a state report card, and I will show you this. I am gonna share my presentation with you so that you can take time, you know, at your leisure, to investigate. And I put a link in there to this. And... Let's see where we live. Nope, that's Telahoma. Is it Telahoma? No. If that was Telahoma, then this must be us. There we go. See, and the thing is, this is for all the districts in Tennessee. You can go anywhere. This is not just us. You can go and be nosy and look at any place. So, when you do this, we have information about our district. But these school letter grades are only applied to schools. There is no district letter grade. Remember way back, we did a presentation, I said that we were advancing. That's a district designation. For whatever reason, that letters for schools, other classifications for districts. So, if we were to go here and we were to pick a school, for instance, the high school popped up first. The school letter grades live under the 2024 performance metric. It's the very first option. And this is important because it shows you all the calculations. So, it gives for achievement, we were a level 4 at the high school. For growth, we were a level 3. For growth for high state students, that's that 25%, level 3. And college and career ready, we were a level 4. And this gives you a breakdown, this is that measure, the, you know, all the tables we looked at said you got a 1, or a 2, or a 5, or whatever. That's where these numbers. And they also break it down if you wanna look at subjects, if you wanna look at student groups, authenticity. So, it's, it's a plethora of information. And you say, I don't really care about that. I just wanna know what, how in the world did this big old letter pop up? Well, and it shows you. For achievement, we had a 4, and to take 50%, we got 2. Growth was a 3, 30%, we got 0.9, et cetera. And then they add these decimals. And their final score was a 3.6. And a 3.6, according to the scale, lies in B range. So... And this accountability system has nothing to do with reward schools or targeted support and intervention, or additional target support information, or, or comprehensive. Those are two separate systems. So, it's possible that a school can have a B and be a reward school. Or it's possible that they could have a, a C or something, and maybe target. It all depends based on the different accountability system. So, again, with, the high school's the only one that had... If I go to an elementary school, then they all pop up. Again, you gotta live here. You know, if I was really in my teaching mode, I would bring someone from here up and let you be touching the screen. Okay. But again, it shows you all the information. You notice it says not a high school, so that, that's out. And you can go through and see all the same sort of information. For sometimes, they say there's not enough students to register. For instance, here, it said English learners insufficient in count. You had to have enough students in the category to register a value. Okay. And again, you see over here, we get scores, we get a letter, and it's the same scale regardless of K-8 or 9-12. So, as, as I say, at your convenience...
Could you stay on that a second?
I'd be glad to. What would you like to see?
I would like to see what's causing the C, which area.
Okay. Let's go back.
I mean, this is important information for schools to study.
I would, I would say, looking at this, it's growth. Because there was, they were a level 4 in achievement. They were a level 2 in growth and a level 1 in the bottom 25% growth. I'd say that's what depressed it.
So, it shows that the 25% is where we need to concentrate.
Not necessarily 25%. A level 2 on a scale of 5 is low as well. Yeah. So, I'd say overall growth and growth of the 25% contributed to that depress down to a C. Because last year, they were a B or, or an A. They were an A last year.
So, some, yeah.
Yeah. But again, you have to remember too, this is measuring a different cohort of students. So, when you look at achievement, previously, you know, you had your third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders. But then the next year, you've got another group of third graders coming in and a fifth grade group leaving.
Right. But you see schools doing the same thing every year with the different kids.
There are some who are consistent. That's right. They don't always go y'all. In fact, with our own schools, the high school had a B, and last year, they had a B, and they had exactly the same score that mapped onto the B. Yeah. We had a few, North Coffee, I think, was the same. Not only was it a B, but it was the same score. So, we have some there consistent, and we have some that change.
So, if we have our, our achievement, and, and if you're a level 4 or even a level 5, then it becomes a little harder to squeeze out growth.
Not necessarily.
Okay. So, can you comment on that?
Sure. The reason, it's, growth is based upon a, a testing history, the testing background. And when you look at growth as a group, then there is an expected, uh, performance. If the students make that performance, or they're within a comfortable interval or around that performance, then it'd be like a level 30. If they didn't perform quite as expected, that would be more a level 2. And if they really didn't perform as expected, doesn't mean they didn't grow, but they may didn't grow as much as expected based on their past testing history. But again, you could have a group and they did better than expected. That might be a 4, and really better would be a 5. So, it, it doesn't matter if you're low achievement, high achievement. They're separate bits of data, and they pair up. You could basically have four outcomes. High achievement, high growth. High achievement, low growth. Low achievement, high growth. Low achievement, low growth. I mean, it's possible for any of those four.
Can you go back to that scale of where it falls on that?
Yes.
The score, the score range.
The 2.9.
The letter grade score range, yes.
And then the 2.9 falls here.
So, that's, I'm, yeah. So, that's, that's something to look at too, you know, how...
Yes. To say if it's borderline or if it's in the middle, sure.
And, and unfortunately, that's what the public looks at, that letter grade. They, they're not gonna go in and analyze all this, you know? No, I wouldn't think so.
You don't mind?
I don't think so. So, that's something we have to realize. You know, we can explain everything away or try to, but...
Well, but the thing is, the data, what it's telling us, it's not our place to try to rationalize performance. The purpose of data is to inform us. And when we look at that data and say, okay, this is what I see, why is it this? And then we can start digging. And again, the public's not gonna start doing the digging, but the school leadership can, the teachers can, up here at the central office we can. And then we can start seeing some things over here in these levels. And then from here, okay, can I dig a little bit deeper? Well, I'm not seeing much under here for this 25, but I'm seeing some things here for achievement and for growth. For instance, if you're looking at this and you're telling me which was the weakest area of growth, I see a literacy a 3, I see a numeracy a 1, a science a 5. Well, that would tell me numeracy, okay. And then you could dig more. Well, why would it be that? And then you could start looking at root, root causes, if you wanna get fancy with the state's vocabulary. What's the reason why? And then you could see things in your own building. And say, okay, did I have change of faculty? For instance, did a school have a teacher who left in semester 1 and replaced with someone else in semester 2? That could be a problem. Or it could be a good thing. You have to look in, dig, and look at, 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 uh, group data, individual student data, and you can see the impact of change.
Okay. Are we digging?
Yes. Yes, we are. But, and it's different from different buildings. Some buildings may have had the same teachers for who knows how long. And again, if they have this, I don't care if it's an A or, or an F. You'd wanna take the data, see what it's telling you, and make decisions. You know, they even say, data-driven decision-making. Yeah, nice phrase. What does it mean? Means you take your information here and you make decisions based on it. What if I have a teacher who's doing really well for the past three years in grade 3? Do I wanna move him to grade 4? Do I wanna move him to kindergarten? Well, if they're doing really good in grade 3, I might wanna keep them in grade 3. Or they may, it could be that you're seeing that, that they may be able to do effectively in grade 4 what they were doing in grade 3. Again, those are all instructional leader decisions in the buildings. Other questions?
The state is, seems to be placing more emphasis on the letter grades now than some of these other, I think probably because it's simple to look and see A, B, C, D, instead of understanding some of the other things. But is that your, your understanding too?
I never try to understand the state.
Well, that's probably good.
I just try to take what they say, make sense of that, and run with it. But, um...
But they're making decisions and, and, you know, that affect our budget and stuff. And, and it seems like the letter grades are going to be the basis of a lot of these things going forward as far as our budgets go. And, and some of the things or bonuses you get, things like that, it could have a monetary or, or financial implication.
There's a lot of impact. And again, I'm not quite sure where that is in the, in the going from bill to law phase. I don't know if it's actually in place yet or not. It still could be.
No, there's still some things kicking around, you know, but...
And that's a lot with the legislators. That's, that's just normal.
Right, right.
Other things, though, feel free to ask. I'm gonna leave this up in case you wanna see more with this, but I'm gonna go back to here. Now, this is the roster of letter grades for all our schools here in Coffee County. And this has been released, I think, since December. And again, you say, well, why didn't you present this earlier? I think your agendas have been rather crowded. And so, this is a time that we actually had an opportunity to look at it. So, you can see, we had a school, an A school. We had 1, 2, 3 Bs, had 1, 2, 3 Cs. We had a couple of Ds, and we have an F. And again, that changes from one year to the next. It's not set. And by the way, I am gonna share this with you, so, you know, if you're taking notes, that's fine. But also, you'll have this to refer back to. Anything else?
Any questions for Dr. Blessing?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Not having to do with letter grades for the schools, but in the spring 24 testing data that you gave, that was July the 8th, 2024. Help me understand this.
I can try.
Okay, thank you. I could ask about 100 questions. I've gone through this and spent time and time and time, and still... Anyway, for example, grade 5 math. Hillsborough in 21, 22 in math had 81.1% score grade.
Proficient. That is, they scored at either met expectations or exceeded expectations. Yes, sir.
And then in 22, 23, 71.8, and 23, 24, 73.8. Now, how... I'm, I'm trying to make some sense of this. Deerfield, for example, 35%, 32%, 30%. Why, how could, why the differences when I go through and look at these?
Well, again, you're, you're going into what, what we call root cause analysis. Why is this that way? Why is this this way? You got two different schools with two different student populations. You have different teachers. You, even though we're using the same material, the I-ready, you can have, I think we all can acknowledge, you can have a really effective teacher, and they have a major impact. And you can have a teacher who is doing well... and they have their impact. And you can have a, maybe a new teacher who's struggling with classroom discipline. Or you have a higher population of, of English language learners or students with disabilities. And they count in there if they're taking the regular T cap tests. So all those questions you ask of why, would, you have to dig down to find what's different. And again, that's, that's about the, the only thing I can tell you without trying to go too specifics to say, well, go into this classroom, you know, it would be wonderful if we can have a highly effective teacher and clone them and distribute them across the county. Recently, in case you, you know, we have trouble finding teachers. So it used to be a few years ago, we might have a math position and there may be several applicants. And the principal can pick whoever they think is the best fit and gonna be the most effective. Now we post a math position, we have applicants from the Philippines and we have the app from, let's say, where did it come from, Ghana, and we have, but we don't have a lot coming here. And we, we have tried to use some of the state solutions like clinical practice permits. That would be a student teacher who is, instead of actually doing student teaching, we're able to hire them as an employee and their year of teaching counts as that student teaching. They have a mentor, they have, but they're still, again, you have to, they're young. They're still trying to get their feet on the ground. And you may have their waivers and permits or someone who doesn't have a teaching license. Like again, a, a permit, but they have a background in the subject. Or you have a waiver, someone certified to teach, um, history, but we really need them to teach English. Well, we apply for a waiver. Means they're certified, but they're not certified in the area. We have a combination of those things in our district currently. So all of those various and sundry factors have to be considered. And again, we have, like in, in years past, you have a teacher you want, who needs to improve. And you say, I want you to go watch this teacher over here. If they're not willing to learn, it's a wonderful idea, but they may not take away as much from it as a teacher who comes to the principal and says, I recognize I need some help in this area. And the principal arranges for them to visit someone who does really well in that area. That teacher's gonna take a lot more out of it than someone who is put there.
It seems to me that the interventionist teachers would be, I mean, how are we utilizing them? Like for instance, Hillsborough has a great math, I mean, we can all agree on that. Every year, their math scores are high and that helps to get them that A, if you analyze the scores.
In grade five.
But overall, if you.
And overall, yeah, that's right.
That helps get that A. Well, why, it's simple. Instead of going to all this other rigmarole, it's simple. Look, what, what are they doing in math there that's working so well? Maybe we need to, to look at that and do that at other schools.
Thank you, Brad. It's great. I appreciate you asking that, because that's part of my reason for asking that. Can we learn and observe and investigate what is going on?
Because it's a trend.
And you can. And you know, it's, it's an interesting phenomenon that sometimes you'll have a highly effective teacher and you point like, what are you doing to be so successful? And they say, I'm just doing my job. It's hard for them to figure out what they're doing, but again, if you look.
It wouldn't be hard for an instructional supervisor to sit there and see what they're doing.
To look and see, that's true.
That's, you know.
But, so it's.
Thank you, Brad.
It's not just a, a straightforward matter of sending this teacher there and they come out and they're gonna be just as effective. There, there's a growth.
I mean, there's a talent, I mean.
And they, and they can take, that's like, again, you hear the phrase trying to drink from a fire hydrant. You know, they could go in there and it is just so instructionally dense. They can't pick up everything, but if they can latch hold of this and take it and work with it and use it in their classroom and then their, their data, their formative assessments, their benchmarking shows that they're being effective, that really, you know, nothing succeeds like success. And they can go in and once they, it's almost like when you're working with a student and you're trying to get them to learn to get that. And once they achieve what they think is success, they do so much better because they realize I can do this. Same thing with teachers. I can do this. I can be effective. But it's not overnight. And even again, instructional leader going in and watching a teacher can take away strategies and share those strategies. But then it's gonna be up to the individual teacher to take it and run with it. Really is. Other things?
So are we doing that?
Yeah, we have different things going on in different buildings. And part of the things you're gonna see tonight, I think from Dr. Crabtree and Dr. Anderson and Mr. Johnson are some things, some things they've got going in their buildings. And you're gonna go through, again, what you're gonna see from the, are gonna be different things, different strategies to try to help them improve. But yes, in terms of, of like sending teachers to see more effective teachers, yes. In terms of our, our academic coaches, our academic coaches are working with maybe some teachers who need some shoring up, whether it's in reading ELA or whether it's in math. We have that. We have that at all the elementary schools and we have a academic coach at the middle school. We don't have one at the, at the high school or Ritter Academy yet. For some reason, it's something about money. No, it's hard to get that. But for the elementary school, we've had these teachers in place as literacy coaches and numeracy coaches and at the middle schools, academic coach, and they are reaching out to their teachers and they are working with them.
Good, thank you.
And we have, you mentioned intervention teacher, I think, Ms. Jones, talk about intervention. We have intervention.
I, I was really referring to academic coaches because interventionists, I think, work with the kids, don't they?
That's right. But again, that's important too. That's just yet another aspect. So we have these different levels, working with the teachers, working with the students, trying to get effective strategies in place. Because the overall, I don't, I don't say I don't care about the letter grades. Sure, I'd like to see all As and Bs. That would be wonderful. Last year we had 80% of our schools were As and Bs. But what we want are ultimately is for our students to be successful in whatever they want to do, whether it's going on to college. And you say, but they're third graders. I'm sure that y'all have blinked and people gone from third graders to high schoolers. It just seems to fly by. Doesn't seem to fly by for the student, but it does for us. And we want them to be successful in their chosen path, whatever it may be. Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Blessing.
Sure.
Dr. Blessing, I've got some other questions to ask you next week when I'm busy with you. Got a lot of questions.
All right, so next up we have Dr. Crabtree. Thanks for coming and joining us and. Can you get it to work, the microphone?
I'll clip on, I don't think. I think I'm just gonna have to hold it. Um, Dr. Gonzalez is passing out a folder. Inside the folder, um, there is a pink piece of paper and that is the root cause analysis that we had to submit with the State Department. The State Department come out and met with us and, um, they tapped all of that in. So there's some shorthand kind of things in there that you may or may not understand, but I'm gonna try to hit some high points of that. And then you'll also in there see Hickerson's improvement plan that we created to, um, address these test scores. So if we look at the root cause analysis, that's the pink paper. Um, so Dr. Gonzalez and I sat and dug into our test scores, analyzed our test scores. We were prepared when the State Department come out to do this root cause analysis because we had already identified our issues. Um, it was fairly easy for her to plug it into the, the spreadsheet because we were ready to, to tell her everything she needed to know. Um, so, um, we ultimately identified that we had a time management issue in our building, throughout the building. Like we had, um, a lot of time that was not necessarily being wasted, but that we could take advantage of. We could, could streamline that time and use that more efficiently. And so we wanted to address that. Student engagement was also, um, something that we wanted to address. Um, we felt like our teachers were doing the heavy lifting and not so much of that heavy lifting was falling on our students. Um, our teachers were going home exhausted, our students maybe not so much. So, um, we have been addressing this through IPG walkthrough, so instructional practice guides. We, um, I'll talk more about that in just a second, but, um, we're doing these IPG walkthroughs and analyzing the student engagement, the time management. When we do the walkthroughs, we timestamp, um, when teachers are transitioning from one thing to another so that we can keep tabs on that. Um, we have been doing lots of planning. Um, we have, um, hired subs to come in and be with our students while we plan with the teachers. And, um, we are planning on, we had talked with Mr. Clark, Dr. Clark, about, um, sending some teachers to North Coffee to observe, to see what they're doing that is continuously getting them the growth and the achievement that they need. Um, and then we decided we would focus on our bubble children. So in third grade math, um, our proficiency level was at 17%. We had six or seven kids, without looking at the, having the numbers right here, I don't quite remember, but we had six or seven kids that were one or two questions away from being proficient. If those children had gained that one or two question on the test, we would have been at 34% for that grade level. And so that shows you just how tight that is. Um, and so that basically is the, the root cause analysis summed up. Um, if we move over to the improvement plan, um, just some highlights, you know, there's several pages there that you can mull over later, you know, you need some nighttime reading. Um, but we have put in our calendar regularly scheduled IPG walkthroughs. And like I said, that's the instructional practice guide. It is, um, a walkthrough form that focuses on student engagement. And, um, when we started the IPGs in the fall, our teachers, no, 0% of our teachers were scoring, basically passing corac, this IPG has different corrections. So none of them were passing correction one. Um, after implementing the plan, um, I've got it on the very back page, 64%, yes, we're, we're passing correction one. Um, so that is showing more efficiency. Um, we're doing fidelity checks every other month on all of our intervention classrooms. Um, we are also implementing growth monitoring the last Monday of the month, and that is, um, done through, um, iReady. And, um, and then we have iReady diagnostic assessments, iReady lesson checks and unit checks. And then the rest of the plan goes into the goals and data collection on all those things. Um, so we basically received the TSI designation for lack of progress with our economically disadvantaged students. Um, and as Dr. Blessing showed you, that's a combination of their achievement and their growth. And then, um, at Hickerson, y'all know that we're very small. And so that testing data is very fickle at a school our size. Depending on what year it is, it's six or it's five teachers. This year it's five teachers, last year it was six teachers. Um, but last year it was 94 students that tested. This year, even though we have less teachers, it's 91 students that will test. So, um, you know, um, looking at that data and digging in, we realized that there was an issue about midway through the school year last year. And so, um, at the end of the school year, we made some staffing changes. We also scraped together every, um, penny that we had basically. And we purchased iReady reading for our students so that they also, not only do they have a math pathway that they would use, they have a reading pathway. Um, we purchased accelerated reader AR. Um, and I will say, it will be nice this year to have TISA funding to purchase these programs so that we're not using our fundraiser money that we do have to, um, purchase those. Um, and then some things I wanted to, you know, bring attention to with the board was, you know, we have had very limited out of district training for our teachers since COVID. And so that would be something that I feel like our teachers would benefit from is going to these trainings that have been very limited. Um, just so that they can grow in a professional capacity. Um, and then also student behaviors at the elementary level are not, we don't have the means to address them as swiftly as they have at the secondary level. Um, we, we have behavior modification classes, but it's a lengthy process to get children there. So if children are severely disrupting these classrooms, we cannot address that and protect the instructional time to those students that are in there. Um, and then also I just wanna say, keep raising the pay so that we can entice the best and we don't have to rely on permits and our uncertified teachers to teach these classes.
That's later on the agenda.
And so I, I think that's all I have that I was ready for. So do you have questions?
You, you know, you mentioned discipline again, and I've, you know, at least for me, I've heard that from a number of teachers throughout the system and stuff, is discipline being, you know, a challenge because you get a disruptive kid in the classroom and it disrupts the earning, or, or learning for everybody. So how are, how are we dealing with that? I know it's a challenge.
So it is a challenge and, um, and we have a process in place, um, in order to get them to a behavior modification class. But like I said, that's a lengthy process. You're talking about, um, probably six to 12 weeks, something like that. And so that's a lot of instructional time lost with those, those children, um, that whole class of children. And it may not just be that class because if they're in the hallway screaming their head off, they're disrupting everybody in that hallway. And then it's keeping us from our jobs.
And that's what I was gonna say, that also keeps us from being able to be in these classrooms because some, sometimes that behavior if you're with that child most of the day, so.
I know what Charlie Westmore used to do to me.
But I do feel like that is something that needs to be addressed, um, is, is protecting the, the instructional time for these children who deserve to, to be taught and have the best, so.
Do you have several of those?
We have, so.
And that's, going back to what Kristen was saying a while ago, and that's the reason I was asking her. That's that Title IV stuff that she was talking about just a minute ago, going to, using your teachers to go to extra. So if we take that money away from that, then that takes away from you being able to go to extra training and things too, so.
Hickerson is fortunate enough that in the past we have received STEM money. So my teachers do get to attend STEM, not all of them, but a handful of them get to attend the STEM conference every year. I try to send that some, um, to that. And then, um, T E T C, they, until this year, they had been going to that, which is a technology conference. And then PE and, um, um, school counselors have been attending some conferences. But for your everyday classroom teacher, they haven't, besides what's held in district, um, they haven't been receiving any type of outside training.
So that's what I say, we're, we've gotta be careful pulling from Title IV and, and putting it into Title I because of those reasons, if we take that, then we're taking away y'all's training, so it's a.
It's a double edged sword.
It's a double edged sword. And we just making sure that, you know, we know that we, we hear you. We hear Kristen, we hear you and.
Something I will say, um, when Dr. Blessing was talking, so, um, those AMOs that are the targets that the children have to grow.
Yes, ma'am.
Change every year depending on how much growth they did or didn't make. So if they didn't make a lot of growth this past year, then they lowered the AMO to make it more attainable. So you're more likely to show growth the following year, if that makes any sense at all, so. So it, it just, it's a sliding skill. If you're, if you're, you know, if you shoot from a level one to a level five, then they're gonna shoot the AMO up the next year, which means it's even more. which means it's even more difficult to obtain that level five, so.
So this pink sheet is out of your school improvement plan?
That is, so yes, it's out of our E-Plan. And the State Department sent someone to fill that out. We didn't actually fill that, we sat with them while she filled it out.
Right, right. I know that Krista works on that.
Yes, yes.
But this sheet then, is that going to be used to modify the school improvement plan next year?
Well, this is what we are working on. This is just a working document for us to know what we needed to address and how we were planning to do that.
Okay, so elements of that will work its way into the school improvement plan that we file with E-Plan, right?
Yes.
And we met with our teachers January the sixth and rolled out the plan with them. Dr. Cornelius came and gave us support and was there just to be there with us as we did that. We've also had some members of the central office that have come out to do data chats. We met with every third through fifth student and did data chats with them just to go over, we made folders for every child. We did that and we're also, Ms. Tanya Arner, Dr. Kitty Cornelius, Dr. Crabtree, myself, oh, don't make me do that.
But we are, we're also, at least once or twice a week, we're staying after school during the excellence program and volunteering. So with the bubble kids that she had mentioned, we're working with those students with math, just trying to fill in deficits and trying to get to get students caught up. We're also working with K through two because we have identified that that's part of our root cause analysis, that we've got to get students fluent faster so that way the comprehension piece can be there when it needs to be for third grade. So those are things that it's, it's one of those that we're putting, we're putting pieces in. We're trying to really monitor and watch. Some of it takes time in just trying to be consistent with it, so.
So how are we tracking these, you know, your working document? But are you tracking progress in these?
So we have been, as far as making sure that we're hitting the things on that, we're keeping up with the dates. I have a spreadsheet every time that we meet for tutoring. Also, when we've had the data chats, we've recorded that as well. We're fortunate with iReady. So iReady does the data tracking for us. Ames Web, we've got data tracking through that. We just completed the mock assessment for ELA. So we've already been going through and poring over that data as well, just trying to see where the need still is with the standards. How does that compare? We have historical data that we have completed of certain standards. Certain, certain standards are heavier on TCAP than others. So we've been tracking that, trying to see, to make sure that we hit those as well. But just that, just trying to keep up with the programs that we have to try to make sure that we're on target.
Okay, and any questions for Dr. Crabtree?
The child who's disruptive, you said it can take, what, six to eight weeks to get him?
There's no definite, there's no definite timeline. It's just all dependent on the circumstances of the child and the data that the team can use to make that decision. It just, it just depends.
It could take longer.
It could be up to a year, it could be up to a school year to get enough data and documentation. Because when we're talking about a change of placement, whether it's a sped kid or a gen ed kid, we have to follow state and federal guidelines to do that. We can't just go in and remove a kid and put them at the cost center or, you know, we have to follow these guidelines. And there's case law after case law after case law where that hadn't been done and it's a problem. So, so we're bound by that.
So Charlie, so a student then could be whatever grade and being disruptive. And it may take weeks, weeks to get that person, the attention, the.
Well, now the attention's going to come immediately. It could take up to weeks, months to put together enough data to justify that change of placement.
And so the kid could day after day then.
Yes.
Be disruptive.
Yes.
And taken away from, oh.
Yes.
Stress is putting on our teachers and our whatever and.
Yes, yeah. There are a lot of things we can do on campus to help support that student with issues. But when, when we're talking about the legal side of changing the placement of a student, and if we remove a student from any school in this district to another alternative setting, that constitutes a change of placement. And we have just guidelines that we have to follow. And I'd be happy if somebody wants to, you know, if you want to come by and visit, we have an actual behavioral handbook that breaks it down. I created it last year and it breaks down the entire process and every step we take as a district to do that.
I'll come see you.
Yeah.
Questions for Dr. Crabtree? What can the board do to help?
Well, and that's why I mentioned those last few things, you know, just funding wise, you know, making sure that, you know, that just keep raising that pay so that, you know, we can attract the best of the best. And, and looking at student behavior, if there's ways that we can address that and then add district trainings, helping our teachers grow to the best of their abilities so that our kids are getting the best, so.
And stress and the pressure on our, in our system, well, thank y'all for all you're doing.
I want to add one thing about the behavior in our district. We, we have a lot of problems. We, we're, every district in the, in the state and the country has problems with behavior. But I think our district is going in the right direction. We're handling issues as fast and as promptly as we possibly can. We're making decisions and I've had meetings with every principal in here and we've talked about the kids that are being affected by the behavior, they're as important as, when we make those decisions as a student who's actually exhibiting the behavior.
Are there more tools that you could use in your toolbox?
As far as behavior?
That law allows, but, and that's, let me see how to put that, probably controversial.
There, there, there are a lot of options that, that, that people would recommend, but for someone to assume the liability for that decision, that, that's, that's so impactful for an individual teacher, myself, any principal, to make the decision, especially when we're talking about, you know, the corporal punishment, things like that. Those are things that there's, I would dare say there's not a teacher in this district, an administrator in this district that'd be willing to take that liability.
Well, but does, does that come from, does a lot of that come from support from administration all the way to the top?
Yeah, it goes all the way. It goes all the way to the top. And here, and here's the thing about the legality of corporal punishment. If, if that happens, yes, there's insurance that, that covers teachers and part of certain associations and everything. But those things can actually be taken out of the school's hands and taken into civil court as well. So once things roll into civil court, it's out of our hands for the most part.
You have law, you have state law that recommends it.
Yeah.
To this day.
Yeah.
You have policy that still exists.
Yeah.
Okaying it. Not to say there's probably not means or measures that need to be taken in different strides to actually ensure you keep control of it.
Yeah.
But that's, because I got a feeling that's going to be an interesting conversation among many soon.
Yeah, and.
Something else to consider with that too, with Mr. Westmoreland's part, is with, with special education. And he's been good to work with this. Bless his heart, there's been times, especially when we have been frustrated, he's had to hear a lot of venting from us. When it's, when it's come down to it sometimes because you do feel like your hands are tied behind your back and he has what he has to do. Plus, there's only so many behavior mod position or spots. And you've got six elementary schools that are feeding into two B mods. And before, we only had one behavior mod. Now we thankfully have two. But we also have students that are non-sped students that cause disruptions as well. And you have to wait much longer to get them into B mod because they're not sped. And so you have to go through, so that, that's another piece of that puzzle is that you've got these kids that are non-sped that we don't have costs, we don't have an alternative school program. We get ten days that we can send them home. But that's, you know, that's just something else to think about.
And that's where, that's where I'm getting, I want to make it clear that I'm not talking about sped. I'm talking about every single student we have. There are guidelines for different things, stuff of that nature.
And, and there's.
Across the board.
Yes, and one point, one point we have to make though, when it comes to that change of placement that I've used, that doesn't just apply to a sped student. That also applies to a gen ed student. And, you know, there are, there are anomalies in the district where, you know, with zero tolerance and some things that happen, we, we have to kind of step over a rule every so often for the safety of the other students and everything. But as a general rule, if we're going to change a placement for a student, gen ed or sped, we're required to follow these guidelines. And these guidelines consist of several steps to collect, collect data, put interventions in place in the classroom to try to support that student in the classroom and let this data, and we have to show our due diligence that we're doing everything we can do to, to work through the behavior and teach the student strategies. Once we've done all those steps and we have the FBA in place, the BIP, and we've done everything we need to do, then we go back and review it. And if it's not working, then the next step would be the change of placement. But even then, with the change of placement, the whole goal has to be for that student to come back to their home school as soon as possible, once we, we, we make adjustments.
I'd, I'd love for y'all to have all the tools in the toolbox necessary. Do what you need to do.
Yeah.
See that day again. I'll be the poker of the bear here, I guess.
I think we're missing something here though. These kids are our customers. And we need to find, if there's a child screaming in the hall, in the hallway in my classroom, I need to try to find the root cause of that first before I start jerking the paddle. And, and I'm talking about non-sped kids. There's, it could be something in their home life that's causing them to be that way. And, and it's, and of course, that's what the public does not understand what teachers are up against.
But behavior.
We're not psychologists, you know, they're, but you've got to do that because you can't just think, well, that's a bad kid. He's screaming every day, we're going.
Just move him out, you know, outside, out of line.
So Ms. Frida, what, so what we have done at Hickerson, and it's, I think several of the schools have adopted it. We've gone through the trauma-informed training, which talks about the ACEs and talks about, because we do.
And once you, once you diagnose that child, then what do you do?
So we have some calm down corners that are in each of the classrooms. We try to do the morning meetings to try to talk with kids. We have Ms. Amy Avi, our school counselor, and she is really good to reach out to the parents, to reach out to the kids. We, we have had lunch groups where we meet with these kids. Ms. Avi is really good to meet and have lunch, lunch groups with them. I've had kids in my office where I've got like a little calm down area. There's been plenty of times that we've had them in there doing homework with them, trying to walk with them. You just try to figure out what best works with that child. Some, some kids have to have a minute just to, to go get a drink of water and come back before they're ready to talk. It takes a little bit of time to get to, to know that child, to see what triggers, what doesn't trigger. We had some that the triggers were riding, that once they got to the ELA part of the day and they were having to ride, that was the part that was causing that. So we would put things in place. We would take a highlighter and highlight. If they got through so much of their, their assignment, then they would come with a, the teacher would give them a post-it note and they would bring it. And one, if it was a certain color, we knew that was a good day and that child would put it on my door, my office door, so we would know that. So there was at one point that you would have seen lots and lots of post-it notes at different doors for different kids. We've got a parking lot with the zones of proximal behavior. Like if they're in green, that means they're having a good day. If they're in red, it's not such a good day for them. So we've, we've got a little parking lot. We've had kids that will put tractors or cars in that little parking lot and wheel it in to let us know. So we, we are trying the, the best we can with that because we know, we know that home affects those things. And we know that we have to try to work within relationship building, trying our best to build relationships with the kids. It just gets to the point at, and it's not, when we're talking about this, it's maybe one or two kids. We're not talking about a handful of kids.
That was about wondering how many kids that they're like that.
And I'm sure it varies, I'm sure it varies depending on the school. But I know at Hickerson, it's just been a small few. And you try to navigate that. You try to get them back regulated. But it gets to a point on the worst days or the, the bad days that they have to go home at some point. And so we try, we try our best not to have to do that. But sometimes you have to. But those are the things that we've been doing, Ms. Frida, trying to.
And you're, and you're exactly right. And what everybody has to remember, and we talk about it a lot at the district layer, the campus level, is behavior is communication. They're, they're acting out, they're something, you know. So we have to really find out and dig in. That's why the data is so important. We, we do interviews, we, you know, we do observations and, and we really dig into the root cause of the behavior and we find out what the triggers are. And then we start putting things in place to stand in front of those things.
Our greenhouse, we use our greenhouse a lot. We have kids that like the worm farm, so that is used as a reward. We have kids that, you know, the studies show that heavy lifting, so being able to, to take buckets of dirt or rings of paper. We have kids that we had little backpacks and they would take the rings of paper down, you know, to another class. Hey, can you help us take, take Ms. Bonnie? Ms. Bonnie needs lots of paper. So they would do that. Again, you just find out what works and you try. And it might work for two or three weeks and then something happens and you start over.
And that's the process that Mr. Westmoreland's talking about. Because like you said, there's something there. And, and sometimes you can't figure it out. But the goal is to intervene, figure out what the problem is. And, and the whole time the school is trying to do this, they're having the child yell or scream or, or hit or, or do whatever they're doing. But it's still, there's a process that's set up to try to figure out what the problem is, what those triggers are, to get those taken care of. And if you sooner or later you can't figure anything out, you move to the next step, which is B mod. So that, that, what they've been telling you about is the process. And it's, it's not an easy process. It's a, it's very difficult. It's hard on the students, it's hard on the teachers, it's hard on the staff. That, that's the process.
As, as, just to, to clear up, instead of just talking about whooping the paddle out and not worrying about an underlying fact, I want to be clear that I, there, ninety percent of the time, there's probably going to be an underlying issue causing that, which you must address before you do that. But what percentage of our issues doesn't have an underlying fact? Do we have an idea of?
Yes, yes, I can't give you a percentage, but I will say that there are some students with medical diagnosis that.
That's an underlying fact.
That are.
I'm not, and you got guidelines and you got different things. Yeah, I get that. I understand that a wholeheartedly.
Well, but, but you've got, you've got students who will just act out because they're refusing or they're, they don't really have any reason. They just don't want to do what you're asking them to do. And, and I had a, I had a conversation with a parent just today in a meeting about how everything we're doing here in the district needs to carry over in the home. And if we need to come in and support the parent in the home with, with structures and things in our home, you know, I'd be more, you know, it's an open door for us. Yeah, we all would. And, and, and that's the most important fact that, that a lot of times we miss is those underlying issues are things that are so far out of our control that we, we don't have an answer for them. Because we can do everything in the, under the sun in this district to support a kid. But once they get on that bus and arrive at that home and it's all undone, we basically start back over the next day. So I'm, I'm a big advocate on parent involvement in these meetings and being involved in all this stuff. Knocking on parents' doors and doing home visits on their front porch to make sure they're aware of, you know, hey, your student's really having a problem on the bus. So let's have a conversation about you providing transportation for a little while. You know, and letting, and making them have to take some ownership in it.
Yes.
Are those home visits still occurring? Are we still doing those?
They, anytime I get a phone call, I'll knock on somebody's door. Yes, and they, and they happen. And, and I know I've got some case managers in the district who'll call having issues and the first thing will come out of my mouth, let's do a home visit.
Do you see progress?
Let's go visit them.
Like, like after those occur, like can you see progress sometimes?
I, I don't think, you know, most of the time, yes.
Yeah.
Most of the time, when you show up on the front door.
Yeah.
Sometimes they don't come to the door. But when they do come to the door, they're, they're ready to listen and.
Right.
Sign paperwork, schedule meetings. They don't return phone calls. But when you knock on the door and you walk up with a shirt and tie with a. and tie with a, with a thing, they think, oh my, oh my goodness. And, and it makes a difference sometimes. And if it has to happen, you know, that's, I spoke to them about home visits.
And we are SRO. Definitely. With us, or he carries us. Yeah, so.
And, and all the, the things they're doing in their, uh, school for the behavioral, uh, interventions and strategies, that's happening in every, every school in our district. There, there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of similarities, but there's, you know, each kid requires different, different things.
We appreciate what you're doing because you, I mean, you've, you've tackled the problem and you're working it out and that's, that's all anybody can ask. And you don't have the privilege to just pick your kids like charter schools do, private schools. We, we serve everybody and that's what the public doesn't understand, what teachers and educators face every day, uh, in public schools. And I think, I think overall, we do a really good job in educating the, the public school child.
I, I had a talk with a parent the other day and she was worried her child was behind. And I told her, I said, he is behind, but the fact is you don't need to worry about him. That child has a work ethic and a grit like no other. He will be successful. He will make sure that he is successful. And that is our goal at Hickerson, is to raise successful, productive citizens. And so no matter what the test scores show, we are confident that we are raising successful children.
Dr. Crabtree, thank you for the greenhouse program.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, Dr. Anderson started that, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And, uh, the, uh, when you go out on a home visit, you may have heard this a while ago, do you have someone going with you?
Absolutely.
Good.
Nobody goes by themselves.
Good, thank you, thank you, thank you.
There's been several times where they would go, a, a teacher, a principal would go with an SRO, would always go.
Good.
And there's been times where I would go with the principal or a teacher.
Thank you.
Uh, no one goes, no one goes.
Our practice is too, most of the time when we go out, it's usually for attendance or if it's for sign paperwork, we always alert. I'm always calling Dr. Cornelius or calling Mr. Westmoreland to let someone at the CO know that, what we're doing. And we always take an SRO officer with us.
Good, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And there's been a time when our SRO is off and we've called to get one from another school. Usually Jason DND comes over from COS to assist us or something like that.
And there's been, there's been several times I've went and gotten the SRO from the campuses and they went with me. I won't go by myself. I take, it's always two people.
Good, good. All right, thank you, Dr. Crabtree. Appreciate you. All right, Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming.
I have a PowerPoint. Oh, I need that microphone, I guess. Um, but while we're on the topic of behavior and discipline, of course, I work at the COS Center, we have a plethora of that. When you're talking about tools, Robert, there is a tool that we have exercised this year that is a legal option that a lot of people didn't know, but it's the State of Tennessee Legal Option. We can sometimes, and you don't aspire to do this, but we can sometimes have students so volatile, so disruptive, that they're robbing the education of another 20, 25 students. So what do you do with those students? Now, we don't have a lot of options. As Mr. Westmoreland was alluded to, we have a process, we have protocols, but there is a legal option through alternative school to where if a student is deemed so disruptive that they are detrimental to the success of other students, you can remove them and put them in a remote learning situation. We don't really espel in the State of Tennessee anymore, but this is the closest thing to it, while you're keeping them enrolled in school without the expulsion and you're still providing an education through packet work. And I've got two students in particular, of course, I'm not going to name names here, uh, but I've got two students in particular, that they come from the same household, they're brothers. Uh, they just do not fit in in-person learning. We have had to place them on remote learning and ironically and miraculously, they are actually producing more work in passing now where they were not in in-person school because all they wanted to do was take time to start drama and fight with other students. And actually, this is a testament to this, I had one student come in, take the ACT. Uh, he spent, and I was so surprised and proud of him, spent an hour and a half taking that ACT. For this particular student, probably if he'd been in person, would have Christmas treated, we've heard of that terminology, spent five minutes on it and went right back to class so he could get back to the drama. So that's one legal option that we've had to start exercising and we have that through alternative school. Now, of course, that's not going to help elementary's problems and things like that, but of course, your students are my future issues when it comes to things like that. So that's an option that is legal that we have had to start utilizing.
In, in virtual?
No, 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 no. COS Center, COS Center, yeah.
Or COS Center, but, or alternative setting?
Alternative setting.
What about high school or middle school?
High school, middle school, yes.
Can do the same.
If they come to alternative school, I can do the same. Now, let me say this, it's not something we aspire to do, it's not something that we, uh, use very readily. We have to kind of be conscientious not to say, well, we're just putting them all out there. I mean, out of my total population right now, I've got two students on it, the two family members and the reality is the home life is not enough support for them to function in person school.
And I'd hate.
And I had rather them not take 20 other students with them.
Robert, you might have been asking the middle school students at the middle school or at the high school, their next step is the COS Center. So, so it would happen from the COS Center, but not from actually middle school or high school.
Well, but we were, we were talking about the virtual part of it and this and that, and I didn't know if it was offered.
Let me clarify this.
Through, through alternative, I was wondering if the high school could recommend that and skip COS.
See, that, that.
But he's saying it's through there and that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
My, my big.
I know I have a legal option in alternative school and in law, I can't recite the code annotated off the top of my head, but I, I study law quite a bit because I'm a nerd like that and I just like to know my stuff. But there is a code annotated to where it is the legal option through alternative school. It does not say it's a legal option through traditional schools beyond that.
Right. And that's, that's, yeah.
And it doesn't say you can't do that either, but that would be walking out on a branch.
Well, like I said, you're the next step.
Yes, yes.
Then that would be the next step after that.
Right, which is a great option. You just don't want too many going to high school or middle school going, well, if I just, I don't want to be here today, so if I just keep on, I'll eventually just get on virtual.
Well, ultimately.
Well, and, and virtual, let me clarify this, because I'm the principal of Virtual Academy and the COS Center, and it happens to be in the same building. It's two totally separate schools, totally disconnected. It, we're housed in the same building, totally two different schools. Uh, virtual school is not about that, and I'm going to get to that in the presentation, but, uh, so, uh, now let's talk about virtual. Okay, since we got these scores, what we have, have done is evaluated our instructional platform. We use EdAnnuity. We have looked at EdMentum. At this point in time, we're not so sure that it would be prudent to us to change our platform because consistency can be the key. We definitely have to look at improvement. We have collaborated with another Virtual Academy that is using the EdMentum program. Uh, they've been very gracious with us to work with us. Uh, what we have gathered from that, I'm not so sure their change to the EdMentum program has produced the results as much as the approach. And that's what we're going to start implementing is more so the approach they're using, which gets us to the second bullet point. We have began incorporating live teaching sessions in Algebra II via Dr. Blessing. I don't know where he's at, but thankfully to him, he has volunteered to do that. And English One and Two with Betsy Smith, our CCVA coordinator. So those are tested subjects. The reason we chose Algebra II, we have the biggest number of students in that tested subject, so we're trying to place our efforts where we're going to get the most bang for our buck. That's just logical. English One and Two, tested subjects at the EOC, end of the year testing. Uh, Betsy Smith has picked up doing live sessions with that weekly. Now, let me say this about the live sessions. It's not the end-all be-all, it's a supplement to our EdAnnuity learning platform. Now, our EdAnnuity learning platform is an asynchronous program. And let me clarify, do you hear the word asynchronous or synchronous? Asynchronous means not in real time. It's recorded lessons where they work on their own at their own time. Synchronous means in real time, in person. In person can be in a brick and mortar building, in a classroom, it can be online through Zoom lessons via, uh, the internet, or not the internet, but the computer. Okay, so we are doing synchronous, real time. We started incorporating it, I think it was January 24th. We started this with Dr. Blessing, Algebra II, Betsy Smith, English One, English Two. We are hoping, um, and I have no doubt, it's going to increase our academic growth. How much is yet to be determined, but that is one of our biggest points of emphasis, I think, to increase our academic growth. Uh, third bullet point, our staff and our counselor has, and we've been doing this before, but we've concentrated and added something a little different. We have what's called Workshop Wednesdays for our students, where we've been teaching ACT skills, uh, subject, tested subject-related skills, things of that nature. We are incorporating and we're concentrating on this hot and heavy test-taking strategies because here's the reality of test-taking. It's not only important for students to know information and knowledge, it's important for them to know how to take a test and utilize strategies such as process of elimination. Because on a lot of these tests, they're going to be given four options. Two of those options, if you know how to use process of elimination, you can automatically, fairly quickly delete and at least get it down to a 50/50 where it allows you to analyze the difference in one or two options. So we're concentrating on test-taking strategies, which hopefully is another, um, emphasis that will improve our scores. So that's what we're currently doing. We have started this, this year, since we've gotten our scores, uh, which of course, we're not proud of. There is no one in this room, more so than I and my staff, which they're not in this room, uh, that wants these scores improved. And we've had discussions about this long before we got here. Um, so if we go to the next slide, future improvement. We are also looking at incorporating live synchronous instruction sessions for grade six through eight math and science. Elizabeth Peckinpah, our coordinator in CCVA, not coordinator, she's the facilitator, that's her title, is going to start teaching live sessions, six through eight math and science. Again, tested subjects. So we're wanting to incorporate some more of that. This is kind of a step-by-step building block process. Um, now, the next bullet point, I have possible addition of live synchronous instruction sessions for Algebra One and geometry in addition to Algebra Two. Keep in mind, we've already got Dr. Blessing doing Algebra Two. Now, this is where I have run out of staff members, I've tapped out all my staff members. I have two staff members in CCVA. Betsy Smith teaching English One and English Two. Dr. Blessing, through the good graces of his heart, teaching Algebra Two. From that point forward, with Elizabeth incorporating six and through eight math and science, I have tapped out and exhausted my entire staff. So to incorporate additional classes, we're going to have to possibly, if that's so chosen to concentrate on, possibly look at stipends for additional teachers that I don't know exactly right at this time where we would get them from. Now, let me say this, we have advisors. Every student has an advisor, a teacher of record they're assigned to for their particular subject. These advisors come from the various schools, uh, Rider Academy, middle school, high school, for their subject they're certified in. They work as tutors. When our students need help, they reach out to these tutors and they help them one-on-one. The advisors are required to reach out to the students if they do not hear from the students two times monthly. Uh, but these advisors do not have the time because they're teaching classes daily to be a live session teacher, um, to add to the incorporation of these live sessions. Um, also, third bullet point, students are going to start being brought in in person for summative assessments in all mastery skill units and tested subjects. We're going to start bringing in our, uh, students. As opposed to testing out on their own, we're going to start bringing them in for a two-fold approach. For one, it limits their ability to look up answers online because we know how easy that can be this time, this, or this day in time. The second approach is it puts them in a testing environment before they get to the end of course test. So it's exposing them to a testing environment and it probably prevents them from, I guess, for lack of a better term, misperforming on a test on their own where they probably could be looking up answers. So we're going to incorporate that as well. So so far, we're looking at, we've incorporated Algebra II, English One, English Two. As far as live sessions, we were not doing that prior to the score. We're helping, we're hoping it helps that score improve. Um, we're going to be adding six through eight math and science, again, hoping we can improve those scores. And I think, I think it naturally will. I, I almost guarantee you it will. Uh, how much is yet to be determined. So that's what we're looking at right now for improvement strategies that we're already implementing, future improvement strategies that we will start implementing this year, carry on into next year. Um, now, needs moving forward, because I know you, the board, are probably thinking, how can you help us? Um, I have philosophy and understanding and, um, and, and it's been a good discussion here so far because I know it's hard or it can be confusing getting COS confused with CCVA, two completely different schools, housed in the same building, but two completely different schools. CCVA is a school that is held accountable and tested just like any other school, whether it be the high school, the middle school, the Rider Academy, hence why we're here today talking about scores. Um, we need to be very careful and realize that it is a school that's held accountable for scores. So we need to be conscientious about shifting issues somewhere else. So, and we've been kind of building this boat as we've went downstream. We have been learning, tweaking, improving, as you would any program. This is our fourth year, we've come a long ways, but we're wanting to go much further than what we are. Um, and when I say we have to be careful about shifting issues, here's what CCVA can't and should not be. We cannot be a school that is a shifting of an issue of an at-risk attendance problem. We can't be a shifting of an issue school placement for an at-risk disciplinary problem. We can't be and shouldn't be, um, a school where we place at-risk health issues. Now, with that being said, it doesn't mean we can't take some of those students. We have. But this gets into our enrollment, enrollment application. We have a screening process for enrollment that incorporates grades, attendance, uh, student discipline, teacher recommendation, which is very, very large part of that. And we have parent and student survey, interviews, and we even have in-person interviews if we deem we have some question about the student. When you condense all that down, what you're looking at, there's two factors that determine success in CCVA. Student motivation and the student being self-driven to work on their own at points in time because largely, a large percent, percentage of the time, they're going to be working on their own. So if we deem a student does not have those two qualities of being self-driven and self-motivation, most likely they're not going to be conducive to being successful in CCVA. So that's what we have to concentrate on. So when we go through our screening process with applications, um, if we deem those two qualities aren't there or, and/or the parental support, it's very important to have parental support. If those qualities aren't there, we have a hard time recommending them for CCVA. Uh, so we have to understand the philosophy of CCVA and our mission is to make students successful. That's it in a nutshell, that's what we want to do with any school. So we have to be sure that we're placing students in Coffey County Virtual Academy that have the self-drive and the self-motivation and the parental support to be successful because otherwise. Because otherwise, if we place an at-risk attendance issue in there, an at-risk health issue in there, and an at-risk disciplinary issue in there, and they don't have parental support, they're not self-driven, and they're not self-motivated, we can expect it's probably not going to go well. Um, so we got to identify and understand what Coffee County Virtual Academy is and is not a place for. Um, next bullet point, and I put potential funding for stipends of additional live teachers. I am not one to ask for money. I mean, if anything, I'm, I'm so frugal to the point, sometimes I think money is not the answer for everything, and it's not. But the reason I put this in here, because I've already alluded to this, once I tap out my staff with Elizabeth teaching six through eight math and science, Betsy teaching English I and II with the live supplemental sessions, and Dr. Blessing, and I only have him through the good graces of his heart, uh, once I tap all that out, I can't add anymore unless there are possible stipends to get people encouraged to do it. Um, so that is something to look at, and I know we're in a time of tight money, trust me, believe you me. And I don't have any problem being told no sometimes, but at the same time, it never hurt to ask it, and it doesn't hurt to put it on the radar because if we want to improve, uh, I don't see any other way around it, that issue. Uh, and the last thing we need, of course, is grace. Allow us time to see if the implementation strategies improve success rates. Now, what we're doing right now is going to be tested in the month of April with our TCAP and our end-of-course. We will not get those results back until like, what is it, Krista, Feb., uh, November sometime? The results, end-of-course testing when we do it in April. Yes, late, well, we're dealing with the state, so who knows? It could be two thousand twenty-six, but anyway. Um, normally, it's November, December when we get those scores back. So, um, with all that being said, do y'all have any questions or?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Johnson, how many students? I know it fluctuates, but how many students you have now?
In CCVA?
Yes.
We have fifty-four.
Okay, and what grades do they range from, six?
Six, six through twelve. Now, I can't tell you the numbers in each and every specific grade. We have, we've always had fewer middle school students than we've had nine through twelve. Our senior class this year is the biggest class we've had yet. We have twenty-four students in our senior class, it's going to be graduating, uh, of course, in May, this May. Uh, so our senior class is the biggest we've had. Uh, ninth grade is the second biggest class. And then I think we have juniors are the third biggest, sophomores, and then we have a total of about five to seven middle school students. That's where I think we're at, but it's fifty-four students.
Okay. And the number of subjects being taught, is that basically just algebra and English?
No.
How many subjects?
There, there's a lot of subjects that are not tested.
Okay.
You know, for example, um, you, you're going to have, you know, some chemistry classes, you're going to have some science classes, uh, nine through twelve that aren't tested. Uh, biology is in the, uh, nine through twelve area. Um, but no, that's, and that's the reason we're concentrating on what we're concentrating, they're tested subjects. So with that grade and that score that we get at the end of the year, all that data comes from tested subjects. So you're only smart to concentrate your efforts on the tested subjects. Now, that's not to say the other subjects aren't important, they're just as important. Sometimes maybe more. But when the public perception is they're seeing grades for this, this, and this, you have to concentrate on the tested subjects for your emphasis and concentration while maintaining adequate academic instruction in the non-tested subjects.
Mr. Johnson, do your students that take in the course, do they come and do that in person?
They come and do that in person. Every student we have has to come in person to take that test. Uh, it's not even allowable not to.
Right, and I'm thinking, the process you're using now to get them in to learn test-taking skills should improve that process.
Absolutely, because we're going to expose them to a testing environment before they get in there. Um, and, and like I said, we've sort of been building this boat as we go downstream. Um, that is something we probably should have been doing a little bit better job of before, but that is something we're definitely concentrating on now. Uh, because when we start bringing them in for the summative assessments, like I said, it's going to expose them to the testing environment and it cuts down on the misperformance during the test that they could be looking up answers, so.
I have a question. What is the main reason that these students are choosing to be at the Virtual Academy instead of in-person?
It runs the gamut, um, runs the gamut. It ranges from anxiety in a bigger setting. It ranges from, um, some, especially maybe juniors and seniors have a job and they want to be able to concentrate more on the job, and we have to be careful with that because we emphasize the job cannot come before the schooling. And we have some that are working that do a phenomenal job in CCVA. Uh, we have had some enroll that tried to work and then CCVA goes on the back burner and we've had to address that. So it runs the gamut from, you know, flexible time with jobs, anxiety, uh, maybe a preference to want to go to homeschool but want to, or inquiring about our program first. And, um, it has spared, um, several students from leaving Coffee County Schools and staying with us because it's sort of, it, it's not a homeschool, but any stretch of imagination. But to put it in a nutshell, it, it's sort of like a homeschool with a lot of extra support and staff and tutoring and assistance. So, so it runs the gamut and, um, then we have had some health issues. Parents present it to ourselves, you know, they're having some issues, it's hard for them to sit in school eight hours a day, seven and a half, whatever it may be. And they do fit the criteria of being a good student that's self-motivated, self-directed, it works well for those two. So it runs the gamut, it was things of that nature.
And you said fifty-four students, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that your limit or is that just how many?
No, it's not our limit. Our limit is actually set at seventy students with five reserve slots. And let me explain the five reserve slots. The reason we reserve five slots is for students that are transferring in from maybe out of state, out of county, because the way we look at that, if these students are transferring in from out of state or out of county and they desire to have an opportunity to go in Coffee County Virtual Academy, I figure they have that right, um, to apply for that, as would any other student. So we cap it at seventy, we leave five slots open, flat slots, I call them, for movements from transfers outside of state or county or things like that, to give them a fair opportunity.
Mr. Gilli?
And, excuse.
Is your, is your, your, you've got fifty-four now, you can go to seventy-five, five are reserved. Is there a reason you don't have any more just participation, not a lot of people come after it? Or are you potentially trying, and not as a bad thing, just to be able to handle that many?
Manage. We have quite a bit of interest, uh, some semesters, because here's what we do, we do it by semester, we don't do it by year. So, and here's what we ask students to do, if they're interested in the fall semester, our applications will open up around probably April for the fall semester. If they're interested in the fall semester, they put all their application requirements in, we sift through that and see if we're going to recommend that student for CCVA or not. If they are accepted and enrolled in CCVA, we ask them to commit for a year. So once they're in the program for that fall semester, they have to finish out through December. If they get to December and they decide, this is not for me, I want to go back to in-person, uh, no harm, no foul, they transition back to whichever school they were before. And, and the spring works the same way. Uh, now, sometimes there are anomaly situations to where, uh, we can have an anomaly situation where a student, because of an extreme health issue with parent or something like that, we will accept them mid-semester because we try to be, exercise humanity and weigh those individual cases, but they commit by semester. Um, so your question is, do we have more interest? Yes, we have, we have interest. If we recommended every one of them that applied, we would go over the seventy, seventy-five. But there's a reason we don't recommend all of them because some of them are looking for an escape from attendance issues, some of them are looking for an escape because they're not doing their work at the other school. So logically, why would we enroll them? Because it's not going to improve there with less supervision, you know, with them working at home.
Last question, on the other side of things, in, in the same building, how many students do you have in alternative school currently?
Currently, we're running, uh, and, and honestly, we're at our lowest number we've ever had since I've been there right now, I'm not going to. We are running, we've got, we've got about twenty-five students right now.
I heard you're getting, I just now heard, uh, fresh off the press, you're getting three more next week.
Yeah, it, it's, it's starting to roll in, floodgates maybe.
In case you didn't know, I just happened to hear that.
But I have had up to forty or fifty this time of year now. I'll say this, our cap, if you go by state recommendation, is thirty-eight. It actually was thirty-six, we increased it to thirty-eight because I allowed middle school two more slots. Uh, and the reason for that is you want to try to keep a tw- one to twelve ratio for teacher to student in an alternative school.
And do you have more staff on the alternative school side?
Y- yes, I have three teachers, I have three teaching assistants, one in each room. Uh, we have a counselor, a part-time, she's there three days a week, which I used to have a counselor two days a week, so that's increased in time. And my counselor that is there, I'm incorporating into CCVA, and she's really helping and benefiting us with looking at transcripts, looking at student data for those that need deficiencies identified, and she communicates with Betsy and Elizabeth, my CCVA staff, so.
But the la- the last thing I got is, basically, uh, by doing the math, uh, Virtual Academy is loaded with staff that you have on hand. If you looked at it in a teacher-pupil ratio, alternative school is maxed, you can't really take anymore. I guess you could, I mean, you can make do and do what you need to there.
Take any more students?
But as far as the teacher-pupil ratio. Right, but as far as the teacher-pupil ratio, we, we really don't want to take anymore. You might have to.
Yeah, I mean, the day may be coming, the population growing around here, I mean, it may have to incorporate another teacher and assistant at some point in time. Uh, of course, you know, then you're going to get into, uh, room and the building issues, so, um, but, but yeah, it, it could be possible. Uh, right now, it's not necessary, um, so.
Did you have a question?
What do you do if you see a student is not being successful?
Speak into the microphone.
What do you do if you see a student is not being successful in your program from their test scores or just general lack of doing?
Okay, we're talking about CCVA or, or COS?
The virtual school.
Okay. What we do, okay, this is our attendance policy because people can get, it, it, it can be very hard to understand the attendance prob- uh, policy on a virtual school because when people think about attendance, they think, well, how do you gauge attendance in a virtual school when they're not coming to school? Well, here's what we, how we do it, and it's really not overly complicated. Attendance is based on the progress of work they do weekly. Uh, of course, my staff members assess them and evaluate them daily. They're looking at the work they're doing daily, but they have weekly goals that they have to meet. If they do not meet those weekly goals, they're put on a probationary period. Then, once if they're on that probation period, uh, probationary period, if they fall, fall three percent behind on their work, they're required to come in person, sit in the computer lab where we helped them and assist them get caught up. Once they get caught up, they're released back into virtual, their home, where they can continue to work, and hopefully they do. If they go beyond the three percent and they get up to five percent behind with a combination of, and we've experienced some of this, them ghosting us, not wanting to communicate back and or the parent, and honestly, sometimes the parents are worse about this than the students. If they get to five percent, uh, behind and we can't get app communication with the parent, then we pursue truancy board. So the work, the production and the progress of the work suffices, the quality or the quantity of the work suffices for attendance, the quality of wor- of work suffices for the grade. So that's how we do attendance. And if they get behind, they're not doing, being successful, that's what we do, I go by the three and five percent. Uh, and we bring them in, even if it's before that, we bring them in. If they're showing deficiencies in a particular subject, we bring them in and Elizabeth Peck and Paul, uh, the facilitator, will work with them one-on-one. In addition to, we will have the advisor teachers that are teachers of records that work in other schools, um, that volunteer to do this with a stipend, we do pay them a stipend, they will start tutoring. So that's what we do, so.
All right. Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for, for coming in. I know you've had some health challenges, so we really appreciate you.
Oh, well, I'm glad to be here.
Working through that and coming in.
I'd like to ask you one question.
We got one more question.
I, is there a policy now that the Virtual Academy students, uh, can participate with, uh, the high school? Isn't that a new policy?
Athletics.
Just in athletics?
Yes, yes, now.
I know they weren't allowed to previously.
There are some programs, uh, they're still not allowed to, like, you, you know, I, I don't want to get off into the weeds as far as just off top of my head, but there still are some programs, they're not allowed to, but athletics, they can. Uh, we've got that worked out through T double S double A. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking ban just comes to mind, some of those programs, they're not allowed to, or, you know, various.
Are they allowed to participate in the prom?
They are now.
Okay. So that, did that recently change?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
Do they still have their own prom, even though they can?
Well, okay, that's a good question too, and this is, this has been a long, long trek here. We, we attempted to put on a prom two years running. We have a low number of students anyway, and then when you take a low percentage of that low number that attends and you're dealing with three, four, or five students that attend, it really doesn't work. So it's best for them to attend prom at the high school, I mean.
I had one other, you do have a, a SRO now?
We do.
Every day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we have an SRO and we're proud to have him, he's working well, and, yep, we sure do.
I ain't gonna talk about him on the record.
All right.
No.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the insight.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Anderson.
I don't want anybody to see.
Well, we. I, I know, we, uh, we wanted to get Dr. Anderson and then Lee Rogers, and then we're going to have food.
Let me put it up.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't, I didn't think we were going to go this long.
Just get it and eat while we're talking. Well, just want to grab it and eat while we're talking.
We could do that, yeah.
Eat and bowl, not talking to me one minute. You want to eat while I talk.
Okay.
Whatever you wanted.
You get less questions.
Whatever you wanted.
Yeah, or you'll get, yeah, go ahead, let's, let's, let's go ahead and eat and, or grab the food and if you want to.
If you want to grab food and then I'll talk while you are eating.
Okay.
And you ask questions along. And you ask questions along, is that, is that okay? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, so let's.
What you want.
Sure.
While everybody be grabbing.
Steak over me, can we?
Try not to chew too loudly. All right, we are live again and we are now going to have a print, we're going to change the agenda around a little bit and have Lee Rogers talk about Tennessee Achieve program. So, so take it away and let us, let us know what you want to tell us.
Well, number one, we, we came early and we have learned so much just listening to all the different, we just didn't realize what all went on at a, at a school board workshop meeting. So we're, we've definitely been educated. My name is Lee Rogers and I'm a volunteer with Tennessee Achieves, which is just an organization that serves students at the high school mainly on their senior year. We will be assigned, you know, five to 10 high school seniors and we help them fill out the Tennessee Promise, the Hope if they're looking for that, the FAFSA, college applications, grants, scholarships. It's a totally volunteer, totally volunteer position that Mary Beth and I both do and we really enjoy that. And we have some ideas that we think, that we've learned through being Tennessee Achieves mentors that we think can help the high school in their progression towards moving the kids from their high school experience onto that next level of either TCAT, two-year community colleges, or possibly a four-year school. So I'm Lee Rogers and I have two boys and both of my boys went through the school systems here. My one son, he actually presented to you guys, I think maybe a couple of weeks ago, he was the student government representative, you know, he did that, so he enjoyed doing that. And he's a junior at Coffee County High School, he's actually on the decade trip right now with Ms. Prater, who's an amazing teacher, I could throw that out. And my other son is a senior at Tennessee Tech, Trey, and he went through Coffee County High School and he graduates in May from Tennessee Tech with his RN. So we're super excited, he's going to be doing that, he already has a job at Vanderbilt Nashville, so good, good success story there. You always want to hear some good things about the kids that come through Coffee County schools, even though you might see these grades from the different schools and you think, well, they're not doing well, but there's all these great kids coming out of this, out of our high school doing great and amazing things that we hopefully can help guide them into their future. Either, you know, whether it could be the two-year school, two-year free school, the TCAT programs, or the four-year programs. So this is Mary Beth Johnson.
Yeah, and I'm Mary Beth Johnson and thank you for having me, this has been very informative and I would encourage more parents to come to the workshops. There's a lot of information, a lot of information, informative, there's a lot of factors and issues, serious issues that, that are here. And I think it's apparent that the school board members and the leadership and the educators care about the school system and, and each student. I had three children that went through the Coffee County School and I hope that they will eventually move back here and maybe their children will also be a part of the school system. So I continue to have a vested interest. So yes, we, I am also an Achieves mentor and have been for three years and I think that it's important that we try to reach these students as, as much as we can. So that's what we're hoping to do here with the, we have a.
So here are some things that, yeah, that we, that we've kind of encountered and, you know, we, we encounter these issues and we think, well, how can we make that better? How can our Tennessee Achieves program and our volunteer mentors, there's 50 volunteer mentors in Coffee County that have agreed to do this. So that's a great number that we have. I'd love to bring them all and let you guys meet them because they're all volunteering, they're meeting with the high school students, they're helping them fill out the FAFSA, the Tennessee Hope, the Tennessee Promise, and doing all these things. There's a couple of things that we've, we've come across that I think could be beneficial for the high school. I did attend the TCAT Open House last week, which was amazing, where the one that's out in Industrial Park. Of course, they're going to be expanding that out near the middle school and have tons more programs. So if you, if you want any information about that, I got the entire list of all the different courses and programs that they have. And it's, it's really neat, I mean, between, you know, building construction, computer technology, cosmetology, industrial maintenance, massage therapy, they're going to have tons of different programs. They also have a licensed practical nursing program, which you might have seen it on Facebook where they just graduated, I think you might have saw Thunder Radio posted that, and that there was 12 or 13, they just graduated with their LPN. And so that was through our TCAT program. Unity Hospital plays a hand in that as well, but they graduated those students and they're LPNs now, which I think that's amazing. I did not realize until I went to the open house and met with some different people, they have a dual enrollment program now. You guys may know this, but you're able to start the TCAT programs while you're in high school and finish them out when you finish, once you get out of high school, you finish that program. So say you can knock out one year while you're in high school and knock out the other year post-high school.
Like you do for college, it's just a mission for the TCAT as well.
So anyway, of course, we're going to have our own TCAT and they had the building plans, they had the model, they had everything out there that night and I got to see it all. And they, you know, I told them I was going to come to the school board meeting and they said, please have them come out, we'll open probably this coming summer. And so they'd love for you guys to come out and see the new TCAT facility. And so it's going to be, it's going to be really nice. I did talk to Richard Skipper at the, he was also with the TCAT Open House and he does a wonderful job with his CTE program, I mean, he's, he's on top of it. I did talk to him about our mentor program and he's going to try to pull in the mentors the night of, the night that they talk about the FAFSA Parent Night that they have at the high school at the very beginning of the school year. So they're going to try to pull in the mentors so that we can meet with some of the parents that come to the FAFSA meeting and talk to them about the Tennessee Promise, the Tennessee Hope, and filling out the FAFSA, just kind of like as helpers. Because what he's, you know, what he's experienced, which you guys have talked about this, there's not enough, there's not enough to go around, right? I mean, you've got 450 kids per grade and you have one counselor per grade.
And they're doing a great job.
They're doing an amazing job, it's just they can't do it all themselves. And so one high school counselor, Donna Jones is the senior high school counselor and she's fabulous, but I mean, she's servicing 450 kids. I mean, she's trying to make sure 450 kids, you know, do all the things they need to grad, do to graduate and then to their next, their post-high school careers. I mean, it's just a lot, that many kids per grade, just per one counselor, so that's where we try to step in.
And we'd like to reach these, these kids before their senior year. They kind of need to know their direction that they're headed, whether it's college, TCAT, what, where it's going to be before their senior year.
So, so anyway, what I'm leading up into, leading up to is the Ayers Foundational Grant. So I've looked into this and I had a friend from high school who's a teacher in Johnson City and a couple of years ago, we got to talking about this and she was talking about a lady that she works with who worked for the Ayers Foundation, has anyone heard of the Ayers Foundation? It's really neat, it was established in 1999 and basically it's a trust, okay? It's been, it's been around for 25 years, let's see here, I want to kind of make sure I give you the exact information. Jim Ayers was a successful banker and businessman from rural west Tennessee, the town of Parsons, and he was one of the first in his family to graduate from college. So once he finished college, was a successful business person, he started the Ayers Foundational Grant. Okay, so that started in 1999. And basically, they just started adding schools and so what the Ayers Foundational Grant is, they pay for a full-time guidance counselor to be in the school systems working in conjunction with Tennessee Achieves to help them fill out the FAFSA, the Tennessee Promise, the Tennessee Hope. So Ayers works with Tennessee Achieves, but Ayers is who can, who can pay full-time great counselor to be in the school systems. So from, from some research I did, I'm trying to see the number of ones I've got here, let's see. By 2011, they had added up, added five schools, okay. In 2021, Governor Bill Lee and the state legislature invested in the Ayers Foundation Trust to scale the Ayers Scholars Programs to 11 high schools in seven additional counties. So at that point in 2021, 11 high schools were, had a, had a guidance counselor that was paid by the Ayers Foundation. He was full-time in the school, helping these kids transition from their high school career, hopefully to the next phase of their life, okay?
Could you get a little closer to the mic on that, I think that would go.
Yeah, okay. And let's see, in August 2023, the legislature funded a second expansion to add an additional 10 counties in 2023. So in total, by 2023, the Ayers Foundation provided services to 33 high schools in 21 counties. So 33 high schools had, it depends on the size of your high school, like, I don't know the exact numbers, but for instance, Warren County was just added to this list. So Warren County received the Ayers Foundational Grant, they have four high school guidance counselors that the Ayers Foundation is paying for. My mind was blown when I started reading all this. So I just think, in addition, they work with Tennessee Achieves, which is great. I just, I just think this could be unbelievable for Coffee County and I'm not saying that we're eligible for it, I don't know the exact requirements, if it's financial. It would definitely be nice to apply for this. Now, I did talk to Michelle Schible at the high school, she's the junior high school guidance counselor, great lady, super efficient, does a wonderful job. I think they looked into this maybe five or eight years ago, they weren't eligible then, but when I started reading the different schools that have been added and I saw Warren County, I thought, I mean, I think we're potentially just a rural school, just like they are. They may be a little bit larger than we are, maybe we only get three Ayers foundational counselors instead of four, I'm not sure. But anyway, I just think it's definitely worth, worth looking into and.
And also, we've reached out to Tennessee Achieves, I don't know if you guys are aware of Tennessee Achieves and what they do, but I think they'd be willing to also come to a school board meeting and talk more in depth about what they do.
Yeah, Tyler Ford is the guy that we talked to and he's over at the mentors and he said he would be more than happy to come and do a presentation about what Tennessee Achieves is and what their, what their mission is and how the Tennessee Achieves mentors, which are volunteers like us, you know, try to help with the program. So I would just like to possibly talk to someone in central office that does the grant writing. I'm not sure who that is, but maybe we could facilitate trying to receive this Ayers Foundational Grant.
Ms. Garner.
So you're, so you're willing to, you're, in other words, you're willing to help write the grant, is that correct?
I don't know if I, if I have the grant writing abilities, I would be happy to pursue it, call about it, look into it, be the facilitator of that. I'm sure someone is a lot better grant writer than I am, yeah.
But we want to be a part of that absolutely.
Yes.
Right.
And have, and do what we can and maybe bring on more parents that would be interested in.
I do know that, that what you're doing is very, very useful because me, I'm a grandparent of a, of a child that just graduated and I know so, it was terrible what she had to go through to try to get, is it called FAFSA?
Yeah, the FAFSA.
It can be very overwhelming.
Oh, it was, it was ridiculous and I'm thinking, you know, students that didn't have anybody to help them, they would just give up.
Exactly.
Well, I think that's a great point you're making and you and I discussed this before, you and I in private, but the reason I became a Tennessee Achieves mentor, of course COVID hit Trey's junior year, but COVID was still fully alive and well, Trey's senior year. And we didn't have any FAFSA meetings, no Tennessee Promise meetings, no Tennessee Hope meetings. So I just felt like, where do I start? I mean, he was going to go to Tennessee Tech, but you know, I went to high school and graduated and went to college and graduated in 1992 from UT in Oxford. So I mean, that's been a long time ago, my husband went to Swan and graduated in 1989. I mean, he has two college-educated parents, but I felt like when we started the process, it's a whole different world now. So even though you have parents who went to college, if they're a little older, it's a whole different process now. And if you have parents who have never gone to college, it would definitely be, it can be a lot of work and deadlines and the deadlines are so much earlier than you realize. You know, August 1 of their senior year, you need to be on it. They, they, you know, you should be applying to colleges, starting to apply for scholarships, because basically if you're going to a four-year school, if you don't have everything in by December 15th, you're not eligible. At their senior year.
There are several scholarships at the school that you may want to be going to that their deadlines are the December of your senior year.
Yes.
So whose grant writing realm does this fall in? That's the question.
Yeah, we'd be happy to.
Would that be yours? Okay. I thought I saw your hand back there.
And you're in the same boat that Michelle and Donna, whenever we looked at this several years ago, we were not under being served with this grant.
Right.
I know Grunde County, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
Yes. I guess when I saw Warren County, I was like, I kind of perked up, I thought, maybe we have a chance to get this, you know?
So that's exciting, yeah, definitely something we want to explore.
Great, awesome. Well, that's why we're here.
Some communication there.
Yes, yes, we just weren't sure who to talk to, but we love what we do, we both consider this a passion of ours, so I really, I really enjoy, I should have been a high school guidance counselor, but it's a little late for that. But I really enjoy it, it's, you know, as far as the training, the training, if you ever want to think about it.
Dr. Crabtree mentioned, I mean, we want every student to be, I think, as well as they can.
And I think it's very commendable of you two to, to be the way you are because it's nothing to you, I mean, as far as personally, but it is for our students.
It is.
I know, I'm sure all of us have got invited to be in that program and I thought, boy, you know, I just thought, I don't have time, which I should do it. And y'all are example of people that did take the time to do it.
Well, our students are the future of our county.
They are. So we need to educate them.
So it's good to know that it's working.
I mean, like you and I discussed before, these kids need to be going to TCAT, two-year community colleges or four-year colleges. Or I don't mean this to sound crass, but how do you pay your bills? If you don't have some sort of training, certification, something to help you in the future, you know, to be able to have a family and afford a life. And then you need some sort of.
And, and maybe, you know, you could tie it in with CTE program when you're writing the grants.
Yes.
Because they're, you know, it's, it takes everybody to put in their knowledge.
From what I read, the Ayers foundational counselors, they kind of bridge the gap, like they're at the school full-time and that's all they do. I mean, they're on it, they're, and they start when they're in eighth grade. They start with, when they're in eighth grade, which I think is amazing because that's, you know, and they follow those kids all the way through their senior year, these, these Ayers foundational counselors do, so.
Yeah, it'd be great.
That's awesome, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
For everything that you're doing and I think you probably already saved some kids from falling through the cracks that would have. So like Frida said, very commendable of you all, we really appreciate it.
Thank you all so much.
And thank you for coming.
Before you leave, I want to make a public apology to Lee.
Oh.
She texted me about a month ago about this and I talked to Mr. Parsley and from there on out, it went above both of her heads, I think, because we didn't get it back on radar till Ms. Jones said something about it, but I think it's something that I'm going to let Ms. Garner look into. If that's all right with her, if it's not, it's still okay.
But. One more thing on your plate.
But, but I know there's, I know there's people up here at this office that will more than be glad to help her, so it's not just her working on it. They work as a group up here, do a very good job and work with our counselors and so forth. And I know that it's a situation where we don't have enough counselors, particularly with the, with the seniors. It's a difficult process. We had a problem come in this, this week that unfortunately happened, that we can't do anything about at this time, but that's neither here nor there. But I appreciate Lee and Beth coming out and talking. One question, does it take, do y'all have to go through a training process at some point in time?
It's, yeah, but it's not extended, it's just Zoom calls, it's probably like six or eight Zoom calls.
Okay.
And in those Zoom calls, it's amazing what I learned. I mean, I had Trey all the way through high school for four years and I never knew there were 14 schools in the state of Tennessee that accept the Tennessee Promise, that are four-year schools. So there's 14 four-year colleges that your child can go to and the first two years are free. I didn't realize there was that many schools.
Sure.
So I got to the Tennessee Achieves program and I just, I mean, I, I've learned so much just by doing it.
Well, I'm like you, when my daughter was, was finishing up high school, that wasn't a, wasn't anything going on like that. So I didn't have any experience in it either, thank goodness, I guess, for the most part. But I know for the younger parents now that, that are having these students coming up through junior and senior high schools or, or middle school, senior, through the high school process, that they need some more counseling and individual information that they can take care of because sometimes we slip through the crack, unfortunately that happens, but hopefully we can work with this and, and get some things going on it. So I appreciate y'all taking your time to come out, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Let me share something with you to keep you going.
Yeah.
My sister was the valedictorian at her school and she didn't have a good counselor and she wasn't able to get a single scholarship.
Oh, my goodness.
So she had to pay her way through school.
That's.
And so it is important what you're doing.
It's very important. Yeah, and I'll tell you one more thing I learned, that I did all these things that just come out that I learned. There's, there's this new, it's really not that new, it's the past couple of years, called the UT Promise, the Tennessee Tech Promise, the MTSU Promise. And it's based on financial need, but for instance, if you make less than $65,000 a year, you can, and you, you meet all the other qualifications and deadlines, which is around November of your senior year to apply for this, which is really early. If you make less than $65,000 a year, UT Knoxville is free. I mean, there is all, there's all these things coming out now, now, they're based on financial need and you've got to meet the requirements, but they're so early in your senior year that if you don't know to apply for these, then, then the deadline passes you by. And so that's where somebody with the Ayers Foundation could just be on top of that, just meeting with the, that's all they do, is just meet with the kids and just make sure they're getting all the scholarships, getting everything they need, getting on the right track. Because it's just, you can't wait till the spring of your senior year to decide what you really want to do. You have to start so much earlier than that now, so, yeah, just learned a.
A lot of people would fit under that, less than $65,000, I mean, $65,000 is quite a bit of money.
Yes.
If you can, if you don't go with that, then it's amazing that they could go at UT free.
Right, it's, it's unbelievable what's out there, you just have to research it and find it, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank y'all so much.
Really appreciate it.
Okay. Now, Ms. Dr. Now, Ms. Dr. Anderson.
All right, so we're going to talk about CCMS, Road to Success, all right? Yep, play on words there, so.
How do you turn around?
Yeah, if you, if you choose to.
Put the hand down.
No worries. Yeah. So this is, I, I wanted to take a few minutes and talk about where this journey started, at least with, with me at the middle school. You all know that I've not been there very long, this is my fourth year there, so I kind of want to talk about where this all started. So in 21, 22, when I came onboard, the school was designated as a TSI school specifically for the white subgroup, which, you know, that's the majority of your school, right? But, but that's, that was how it was categorized. Our second year, we held on that, to that TSI designation, but it moved to an economically disadvantaged subgroup, which is smaller, a smaller group. And last year, we became an ATSI designation specifically for our special ed population. And, and so that was kind of a punch in the gut, so to speak. And so we really worked hard, people put a lot of time, a lot of effort in. And so we learned this year that we are no longer an ATSI school. And so that's something that, to accomplish that, I'll show you some numbers here in a few minutes, but that was a pretty massive feat, going from performing at a pretty low percentage to where we are now, so. So year one, year one, what did we do? In year one, we really had an instructional focus, okay? So every meeting that we had, whether it be a small group of folks, staff, like, we zoomed in on instruction. We specifically talked about what are good, sound instructional practices? What strategies should we be using in our classrooms? And so we also did that whole staff, but we also did that in our PLCs, our professional learning communities. And so we really zoomed in on how are we teaching our students? Is it being effective or not? And so along the way, we also really tried to strengthen the culture in the building. I'm a huge component, believer in that if the culture's not right, you're not going to get anywhere, okay? And so we created buy-in and folks began to say, look, this is things that we need to be doing, right? And so, so we created lanes of support for teachers with our instructional coach and with our assistant principals and myself. And so really worked hard to have that instructional focus. Year two, year two was intentional PLC work. Again, we really had time to zoom in on what do the state standards mean? What do they say? How do we interpret those? What does success look like for every standard? How do we communicate that to our students? And so we spent those weekly PLC meetings zooming in on that work. And it's easy to say, well, I teach y'all to know what they're teaching, yes, that's true, but when you start zooming in on those standards and sometimes, you know, the state likes to change things, right? So those standards change every so often. And so really being able to take some time to see what specifically changes for middle school. There may be a standard in, in, in ELA that looks exactly the same from fifth grade through ninth grade, but there might be a change of three or four words and that three or four words is what, what the difference is, right? And so to make sure that our instruction is really aligning to those standards like they need to. We also spent some time with looking at the student work and doing what we call a student work analysis. And so making sure that what the work that students are doing is aligning to those standards. Don't take for granted that it's coming out of our textbooks that it aligns to the standard. And so we really took time to make sure that we were meeting the bar with every assignment. We also started to become more data-focused, which goes into year three. Dr. Blessing mentioned earlier about data-driven decisions. I had a teacher tell me last year, she said, I've never spent so much time looking at data, but it really makes the picture clear. And so we spent every month in what we call data meetings, where administrative staff met with teachers to talk about what does it look like for students? What's their progress looking like at this time of the year, in the fall of years, whatever it may be? And making those data decision, intentional data decisions about who needs remediation and what type of remediation do they need? What standards do we need to zoom in on and try to help support those students? Last year, we also piloted Mastery Connect. Mastery Connect is the assessment platform that Dr. Cornelius mentioned to you all a while back when he was giving you a TISA update. But our students take those benchmarks this year, we've done it, this week is, is our third benchmark. But it gives us a predictive score for each student in every content area and how they'll do on TCAP. Ladies and gentlemen, I went through every kid's score this last summer in every content. I spent days looking at this data and I can tell you that this tool is spot on, spot on. When I got the TCAP results, we went back and we compared, what did those TCAP results say compared to what did this tool say? And I'm telling you, it was right on. And so, so we have put a lot of stock in this. And so, so we have put a lot of stock in this assessment tool, but I think it's very much needed, okay? And so it, it lets us know how our student's going to perform on the ELA test, or the math test, science test. Based on that, last year, when we piloted that, it was about this time of year that we did that, we started making revisions to who needs remediation, and looking at what standards do we really need to focus on between now and TCAP. The other thing that we did is we, we changed our interventions. So our special ed population, you know, they go and they receive an intervention in ELA or math or both. In ELA, we changed that program. That program is more standards-aligned, grade-appropriate, age-appropriate than what we were using in the past. And man, the success we saw with that. Students really were making progress with that as well. So our special ed population went from performing at 3% in the 22, 23 school year to performing last year at the 22%. That's a ginormous jump. And that is the reason why we lost that ATSI designation, because that group, that subgroup made such a ginormous jump in, in their achievement there. So how does this connect to report card, right? Because that's what we're supposed to be talking about. So just like Dr. Blessing was talking to you earlier, we are scored on that achievement, that growth, in that growth that needs, for the students who need it the most. Our achievement is a level three, which is 50% of our score. I'm proud to say that that has grown since I've been there, right? Something that we're, we're seeing the, the needle move. Growth is where we need to grow. Growth is where we need to focus. And that's something that we've, that we've taken a lot of time in this school year in trying to focus on. So since we've had benchmarks all year long, we're able to see how are students performing in October versus now? What kind of growth have we seen? And so that's, that's something that teachers and I are constantly going back and looping back to and looking at. And then our growth for the highest need, specifically those that are performing at that bottom 25%, we were at a level two percent, a level two, excuse me, last year. So areas of support, biggest thing, what can you do? Funding, right? And that's what you've heard all night. But, but we, you know, Mastery Connect, I will say this, it's an awesome platform, but it costs some money. It costs some money. Roughly 20-something thousand for just Coffee County Middle, okay? That price could go down if it is expanded across our district, I do know that, if that's something that the district wants to pursue. But to me, it's worth every penny, because we're able to see what kind of progress are our students doing. Yes, teachers make assessments, and we get assessments out of our textbooks and those kinds of things. But we know that this platform is a platform that's already, has a higher reliability to our TCAP. And so I think it's something like 90-something percent. And so it's, it's a very effective tool that we need, in my opinion, to continue to, to have. Yes, TISA funding would help for sure in, in that area, and that's, that's my plan moving forward, as long as we get to keep that. So questions? What questions do you have?
So with the Mastery Connect?
Mastery Connect.
That particular tool, so it predicts how the kids are going to do on the TCAP?
Correct.
But can we do, can we now then take the data trends and figure out, you know, obviously, how they're going to do on the TCAP, you know, their deficiency areas then? So we should be able to predict that as well? And can we focus on those things moving forward? Is that kind of the next step?
And that's, 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 that's what we're already doing.
Okay.
So after every benchmark, we look at those results and we say, okay, Johnny needs help in reading, specifically these standards. We have a time in the day where we call reaching raiders.
Okay.
And that time is spent where we focus in on what do those needs are? What are those needs, and what are we going to do to support those needs?
Right.
So yes, so we're, we've been doing that all year long.
So, yeah, Dr. Blessing talked about data-driven decision-making, which is kind of the big buzzword to use this, but, but, you know, taking those things and predicting trends, and, and that should help you focus in.
Right.
So this tool, is, is it used in any other schools?
Not in Coffee County, but it is used across the state. I've been in several meetings before where I've heard other administrators in other counties mention this tool. And, and I know Warren County is one of them specifically, yes.
And how did we get it into the middle schools? Did you ask for it in your budget?
Um, yes, because I asked for it.
Okay.
Yeah, it is one of those things that I heard in other meetings that was talked, talked about. We reached out to the company. They said last year, hey, we can offer you a pilot for the spring. And so we took them up on that and saw the correlation between it and TCAP and, and the benefits of it. And so that's what we did. We purchased it for this year.
So you have asked for it in this next?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, mhm, absolutely.
Do y'all have a school improvement plan in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so you're going to, was that part of the school improvement plan?
It is, it is how we're measuring our improvement.
Okay.
Because, you know...
But I mean, measuring it is one thing, but strategies and, and...
Mhm. So those strategies that I...
For instruction are what's important.
Yes, ma'am. So those things that I mentioned back here about the PLCs and, and working through those strategies, all that's in, part of our plan. We also, I didn't mention this, but we also are doing those same IPG walkthroughs that Dr. Krebtry mentioned. We're doing those in ELA and math, and we'll be picking up science next year. And so, yes, ma'am.
Middle school is such a wonderful age, but it's also the, probably the hardest age to teach. And I would love to see the middle school get involved again in, in middle school conferences, and teachers being able to go to in services and things that's just geared to their needs, because they're entirely different from high school, from elementary. And I think that's something that's been lacking, and it's not your fault. It's just that it's something that has happened, and probably COVID brought on a lot of that. But I would like to see that part of your school improvement plan, that teachers are more involved, and that they are the ones that are making a lot of the decisions about instructional strategies and things that's working. That's just a thought, but I, I think, you know, when we involve the teachers at the, at the classroom level, that's when, that's when things start changing.
And we do. We do that every week. We do that every week through those PLC meetings. So I don't dictate what, how they teach. They make those decisions, right? And, and they're able to have that autonomy to be able to, you know, how am I going to approach this, this standard, right?
Yeah, I, I know, I agree with what you're saying there. What I mean is, I would love to see, say, we're not looking at your report card right now, but if we had it up there to see what areas were maybe deficient or not as good as they should be, then involve those teachers that's teaching those subjects in that grade level, and, and come up with a, a, a plan.
Mhm.
And all those teachers being the ones that, that make that plan, not me, not, you know, not somebody at the state level, but, uh, but something that they could own themselves and, and have steps to how to get to that point. Sometimes, sometimes we get, we don't get to the grassroots of something and make it simple. And that's, that's when things start working, in my opinion, is when you, you zero in on something that needs, that needs changing, and that's one thing you focus on. And maybe that's been done.
I thank Mrs. Jones. We've had, since this data started coming out, I guess after Christmas when we got it, Mr. Bless, Dr. Blessing, I think, has gone to almost every school and sit down with administrative staff and maybe some teachers in there, gone over this data with them so they could understand it better, because it's, as you can see, he just gave you a little bit of it, and it gets very complicated as it goes through. I'm, I'm not from, was not familiar with it. I've learned a whole lot about it in the last six, eight weeks. But, but our staff up here, I know Krista, I think, has been involved in some of these things. Jonah's been involved in them. Our administrative staff up here has gone to each school and looked at their data and helped them to look at what they might need to be doing in the future to take care of it.
Well, I certainly think that we're all going to step in the right direction, because this is the first time I've seen in a while actually plans, you know, to, to change and to look at things that, that need improving. And I think all of you are doing a good job. I just think that this is awesome, that we're all coming together and going to work together to, to make us just as successful as anybody else.
I commend Deborah Woodup for it.
I do too.
I do too.
First time in five years I've seen anything.
I have just a couple of things. First, the Mastery Connect, is that 20,000 per year, or is that just 20,000 one-time fee?
Per year.
Per year.
It's so much per license, and so we have a rule of 800. Yeah, right. So, yeah, it is, it is an annual fee.
Okay, so you just budget, you're just going to budget that in every year, as long as you can?
I'm going to lay on central office as much as I can, and, and, and use, use TISA funding as, as long as we have it, and as long as I'm able to say that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I think, I think April's over here taking notes.
At this point, my money list is like, we're paying this off.
On page two, right?
So the other thing was...
With TISA funding, we, we met up here as central office staff with the supervisors and so forth, and looked at various things, and our goal was to, in, in, in the past, the money came in and you could spend it for anything you wanted to for the most part. But our administrative staff up here, the supervisors and so forth, we got together and felt like that TISA money in the future needs to be toward instructional leadership and toward instruction, even though we've gotten some very good, I guess, things to the schools that did not necessarily have anything to do with instruction. But we're looking at this next year that all money, at least the majority of it, goes towards some type of an instructional process, as opposed to, you know, just having to buy something that you might need, which, which were needed, no question about that. But that's what the money's going to be going for this next year is for improvement instruction.
That's great. The other thing I was going to ask is, I think it was at some point, maybe last school year, you guys started factoring in those, and I don't know if it was Mastery Connect, but benchmark scores into the students' actual report card grades. Was that in the spring semester, or?
So that started this school year, back in the fall.
I don't know why I was thinking that it was back in the spring, or maybe you told them you were going to and you didn't. But can I ask, like, you know, what is the logic behind factoring those, those test scores into their report card? Because, you know, the other tests, is it iReady or whatever? I don't recall them ever being factored in, or, and TCAP scores, are they factored into their report card grades? And so, like, I guess I'm asking why, or like, what is behind that? Is, is that something that's mandated, or is that just something that you chose to do? And like, what, what drove that decision, is what I'm asking?
Sure. Right, right. So benchmark scores, we decided to do those as grades. I say we, teachers, okay? Let me, let me specify this. Teachers requested that that happened, because it's amazing what happens when students know that there is accountability versus there's nothing tied to this test.
And I thought in my head, that's probably where they're going with it.
And you're exactly right.
So they'll take it more serious.
Exact, you're exactly right. And, and I do know that last year, we had kids who took the benchmark that we did last spring, you know, kids that have As and Bs on their report card, and would just bomb that test.
Oh, yeah.
And a teacher say, well, why didn't you try, why didn't, I didn't have to try.
Why should I?
Why did I? Why did I need to try? It wasn't for a grade. There was no reason for it. And so that told our teachers, there needs to be, needs to be accountability there. And so, so because of their request,
Okay.
that's what's happened. I did not make that decision. Yes, I finally said, okay, that's what we'll do. But they requested for that to take place.
Right. Is that one of, the Mastery Connect, is that one of the tests that, like, say it'll present a, a question to the student, and then if the student gets it right, the next question is harder?
No.
You know what I'm saying? Because I'm thinking, like, and then that's factored into their report card grade. You know, that could be a disaster. I know a lot of the students have talked about, you know, now that these benchmarks are factored in, their, their averages for the quarters go down, most of them.
So I can tell you this. So these benchmark assessments count as an assignment, a regular homework grade assignment. It could change someone's average one point.
And that's all?
That's it.
So you're saying if, if a student got like a 20 or a 30?
Yes, in the grand scheme of things, because you think about all the homework assignments that are done throughout the quarter, right? And, and, and so that one assignment, that one assessment that we're counting as a homework grade does not have that big of an effect on their overall average. It's just... Exactly. Yes.
Well, that makes me feel better.
Yes, yes. Now, TCAP, that's, that's another story.
That's the best grade, right?
Now, TCAP, according to policy, counts as, is it 10% of that second semester average?
There's actually a policy that is dealing with TCAP. In middle school, it's one percentage. High school's another percentage.
I think we're 10, and high school's 15. I may be wrong.
And elementary could be a different percentage, and that is decided by the, the policy committee.
And I guess that score just rolls into that last quarter?
Correct. Well, it's part of that second semester average.
Oh, okay.
That's also contingent that we get those scores back in time.
Right.
Right? So if we don't get them back in time, then it doesn't, then it doesn't affect the report card. But if we do get them back in time, then it does go on the report card. Yes. Great question.
Well, you have some great teachers over there, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've been very impressed by many of them, and we've been greatly appreciative of everything they've done, so.
Yeah. I'm, I am very proud of my staff.
You should be.
We've made some great games, great games.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but a concern, I guess. I've been in meetings last, last week with TSBA and TOS, and there is a move going on to get the TCAP scores back to us before school is out. So I don't know how effective that's going to be, but that's something that the State Board of Education is working on so that we will not get these TCAP scores when school starts next year for what these children or these kids performed at, at the level before they get there. So that makes a difference.
And that's...
No, I, I had a steroid shot this afternoon, so I'm having a voice change, I think. I'm going through a change of life one. I'm not sure which.
The benchmark scores, those Mastery Connect tests, they are set up when they finish that test and they click submit.
Yeah.
The score pops up for the student to see.
Yeah, I've heard about that. I've heard about it.
So that, that is immediate.
Yes, it is.
So that's great for, for kids to know. I mean, my own daughter, who's in seventh grade, on the way home, how'd you do today? Right? And she goes, that is looking good.
We've had, we've had several rides home like that.
So it happens, right?
He is.
But, but I do think that immediate feedback for the student is very valuable for them.
I agree.
Any other questions for Dr. Anderson? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Absolutely.
For the principles that came out today, this, I agree with Dr. Gill, or, Dr. Gilli.
Easy, easy, Eric. Easy.
I'll take it all day.
We really appreciate you having that. And putting the effort into, you know, what is our improvement going to be? Because I think we got a lot better understanding, so I, you know, of what's going on. So, so thank you very much for taking the time. I know it's been kind of a long process, but. All right, so time to move on here. I see April checking her watch.
I'm going to be good. I'm not even going to reply.
Okay. So update on the after-school program, and, and Ollie and Beth and Jennifer and Ms. Garner worked on that, and I think we, you know, that's actually a meeting I tuned in to live to see. And I think you did a great job.
I, I don't know if I'm supposed to be leading it. My name's on here.
I was going to let you. I'll hand out papers.
I mean, I can just defer to Tanya. She's done a lot of work on different scenarios and different proposals for the budget, and I appreciate all that. That's a lot of data manipulation, a lot of time and effort, so. But she has checked into programs around with different districts, and if you guys watched the committee meeting we had several weeks ago, it got into detail about each one. And I think she, obviously, not being under the grant, we're going to have to reduce probably everywhere across... we're gonna have to reduce probably everywhere across the board, um, in places we didn't even want to. But I think, you know, the worst-case scenario is that we would lose the program and we, we don't wanna do that. We have too many people relying on it. And, um, as, as a parent, I know how valuable it is. So, we don't wanna do that. We wanna do everything we can to save it. So, I'll turn it over to Tanya and you can, um, show us what you've got here and just explain whatever you need. Everybody can ask questions.
Okay, so what you have here is, I've, I've just done some different calculations as far as some requests that come from the committee. So if you'll look up here at the top, um, this budget has been cut significantly from what we are this year. If you'll remember, this year, um, I think we're a little over four hundred thousand dollars, um, to run the program. So, this budget, you're looking at, um, six schools. We had discussed in the committee meeting that we would bus the middle school students that want to participate in the after-school program. We would bus them to their elementary schools. Um, and so we're just looking at six schools in this program right now. We had, um, discussed, um, a month, or like the timing of the after-school program. And based on, um, survey and interest, um, forms and stuff, we had talked about having the program every day that school is in session. Um, whenever we did a survey at the beginning of this year, um, it was asked, you know, when would be the best time to start and end? And the majority agreed that anytime school is in, in session, that it would be beneficial for the program to be running. So that's what we looked at, which is a hundred and seventy-eight days. So whenever I was looking at staffing needs, I'm looking at a hundred and seventy-eight days. Whenever we are looking at educational assistance and the site directors. Whenever we look at teachers, we discussed, um, on Fridays in the past when it was a paid program, there was fewer participants on Fridays. So we thought one way to save some money was not having teachers on Fridays because the numbers are gonna be smaller. So the teachers are figured in Monday through Thursday for an hour, um, a day. And that's how I come up with this budget. The ed, so, this morning, um, Mr. Coon had emailed and we had been going back and forth, the committee and I, and we had come down to a budget. And I think he's a business owner and he's good with numbers and stuff. So he gave me some solid things to do with this. And he was like, reduce the budget by five percent and let's look at it if we charge, um, seven dollars a day or eight seventy-five. So this is, this is where we've come up with so far. And remember, whenever we're looking at these possible revenues, these are just guesstimates. Like, I, I could not tell you for sure how many people is actually going to pay for their kids to stay in this program. But these are educational guesses that I've made based off the number of, um, kids that are staying currently when it's free. Um, the number of parents that said that they would pay for a program at the beginning of the year. So these are just guesstimates. So you can look down here and, um, at five dollars a day, we had discussed five dollars a day. At one point, we had discussed five dollars a day, Monday through Thursday, Friday was free. We had, we gotta charge. It looks like we need to charge for every day that we're having the program, cause just funding-wise. But you'll see, if we're only charging five dollars a day, we would still cut, we would come up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars short. So that would require the school board to, um, you know, help with some funding. If you look at the seven dollars a day for a hundred and seventy-eight days, you could, um, look at about eighty-three thousand. And then, um, at eight seventy-five per day, um, hitting the fund balance about fifty-one thousand. Um, so those are the numbers that we had, that, the last numbers that I come up with. No one asked me to do this, but I just did it because I figured there might be, I know a lot of people's come up here before me and saying, I need this money. So I thought y'all might be interested to know that, you know, if, if we didn't hit the fund balance at all, if we could be self-sustainable, what that might look like. And that's on the, um, second page. And like I said, these are all guesstimates. I don't know. You would have to, if, if we ran off like it has to, you know, sustain itself, you pretty much have to go week by week like, okay, well, what did it look like this week? Do we have funding to have an extra teacher next week? You know, you have to, it's not like you're gonna decide what you're gonna do for the rest of the year and that's what you're gonna do. You have to really manage the budget. Look at the number of kids staying, your revenue coming in, and do the program like that. So, um, we wouldn't have the funding to pay teachers, to have any teachers stay. So that's just looking at teacher, um, assistants staying on that back page and charging eight dollars and fifty cents a day, Monday through Friday.
And that would, that would change the Excellence program a lot.
Yes. Oh, it's totally different. That would be, we're just there to give the kids a safe pla, and no matter what, any of these, our number one priority is to keep the kids safe. So, um, but it would totally change it.
Babysitting or teaching.
Yeah.
Babysitting or teaching.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right, that is the difference.
We had a really, really good meeting, I thought. If, if any of you haven't had a chance to watch it, I encourage you to go watch and hear the discussion on all this stuff. And I know we're trying to not pay for things, but I'd rather pay for this than furniture. I'd rather pay for this than some of the other things that I've paid for. So, I hope that we really consider leaving Excellence the way that it is with the way that Tanya has come up with this. And let's make it happen if we possibly can and not make it so hard on the parents that they can't pay to have their kids attend it.
What we're seeing on the first page is really the Excellence program with, with the teaching. And the back page is, or the second page is babysitting.
Yes, sir.
As Mr. Gilli.
Yes, sir.
So, on that back page, you're saying that would be, that would not hit the, the fund balance at all?
Right. But you're not getting, like, we're not having teachers come in and do any tutoring, but...
Totally different program, which is probably similar to what Telehome does?
Yes, I would say it's, yeah. Because, and we had talked about Telehome, Telehome doesn't have any teachers.
It's just babysitting.
I don't even, she said, I don't even think she can hire the ones that are already working in the school because then it could add into overtime and stuff. So, these are, these are not people that probably know our students and, um, you know, so that's, that's...
And if I recall, I think in December when you gave the report, like, we asked after we started the first of the year with it, you had data showing results.
Yes, we...
Good results in stepping up in learning and tutoring and everything else.
Well, and with the small groups that these teacher, and even on this first page, um, Ms. Matthews had asked me to really try to, you know, reduce the budget, even having teachers. So, right now, we normally, in our bigger schools, we have a teacher for each grade. That's, even on any of these, that's not the case. Like, we'll have one teacher for two or three grades. And the plan would be like, we'll rotate them through small group throughout the week. Um, so it's still a reduction in the teaching, the actual teacher staff in all of these.
But you do have a teacher present?
Yes.
One or two, right?
For that hour, like we have been doing for five, six years.
How many, how many, I can't remember, I can't recall, how many aides were like, say, uh, you have two teachers present? How many aides, were we reducing the number of aides or?
Tremendously. So with my big schools, and this is how I actually reduced it by five percent. So our program goes till five-thirty. And, um, I normally have a teaching assistant there with the site director until the last kid is picked up. The way we have really worked on security, there are a couple of schools that we're gonna make some more changes with as far as like pickup and stuff. For my bigger schools, I said that the, um, all staff except for the site director would be clocked out by five-fifteen. And the site director would stay with the kids until they're picked up. At, that's five-fifteen at my bigger schools, five o'clock at my smaller schools. So that could leave, you know, the site director with the kids for those thirty minutes. Because I follow those numbers and it's doable. It's very manageable after five, uh, five o'clock. You know, a majority of our kids are gone. Um, so, that's how I cut that five percent.
So, the program runs now until five-thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know why I was thinking five, was that last year?
No, it was six last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we talked about how many people would utilize the five-thirty?
Yeah, we...
What time do the teachers start teaching?
They start teaching at three-fifteen at some schools, three-thirty at some schools. It depends on like when they have bus duty and stuff like that.
Okay, cause I know their, their, their paid time is to three-fifteen.
Yeah, well, some of them will, it's just different at different schools.
I didn't see how they could be, you know, teaching at three-fifteen that quickly.
Yeah.
Two questions, Ms., uh, uh, Tanya, if you don't mind, y'all may have already talked about these. Will we be looking at the, that the students paying for the entire five days a week, not just the days they are there? What, what was our conclusion on that, Holly? Do you remember?
I, I was thinking that we had said they would pay for that week regardless of whether they came every day or not. Am I mistaken about that?
I think that would be...
I did calculations by day just because it's so much easier. Because if you think about like the weeks, I mean, whenever we don't go to, you know, days a week, like, how do you figure that out? So, because of calculations, I figured it by day. And I also, while I'm doing this, I'm thinking the kids have to register and pay before they stay. Therefore, we can plan accordingly. Um, so, um, that's something that you all would have to decide.
What, what would, in light of what has happened recently with weather, what would happen if, say, you got a lot of parents that paid the week before and then boom, we're out of school next week?
I would feel like that money would have to go towards the next day.
Yeah, that would be a...
Because that's saving...
That would be a carryover.
Workers.
Okay, and that was my next question is, do we pay our workers on snow days or?
I don't figure they should lose it in that case. But if they have signed their kid up to stay and then they just choose for their kid not to stay, we're not going to reimburse them for that. Right. That's...
But if we're not in session, they can use that.
I think that that would go towards the next day.
Yeah, that would be a bookkeeping nightmare to have it a day at a time. You'd have to have it a week at a time. And then if the parent chose or the child didn't come that day, to be honest, we, we, we kept that money, but it didn't carry over for the next week. They still had to pay for the full week, next week. Uh, and like I said, on days that, that we have to be out for inclement weather or snow, whatever the case may be, then that money would, that, that day would carry over to the next day, I think.
And it's easier to keep up with because it's everybody, you know? It's not just to certain few.
And, and this, and how much are the teachers getting paid per hour?
Thirty dollars an hour.
Okay.
And teacher assistants are twenty dollars an hour. And site directors are twelve thousand dollars salary. I did not mess with the pay scale that we've been using for a while.
Okay. On the, on the teachers, uh, of the students that they're working with, do they have a pre and post-test to show accountability? That these kids are actually accomplishing what goals?
Yes, they do. Um, and this, this year, we started doing, um, a, an even, another assessment. But on top of that assessment, they utilize, we're lucky, most of the ones are their teachers that are teaching the students. Next year, it'll be a little different because we're having to combine them. But, um, I look, what I look at is the iReady data and the AIMS Web data.
I mean, do they do that?
No, they're, they know that because they're in the classroom. So they are doing the testing and they're reviewing the testing and stuff.
So you're saying they already know the children that they're...
Yes, ma'am.
It's in their class?
For the most part.
I can't see how it could be that if it's for the entire school.
No.
If it's, say it's a third-grade teacher, she's just gonna have third-grade students in after-school?
This year and for the last five years, I've had, I've been able to have a teacher with that class.
So you've got a teacher for every grade level?
In my bigger schools, in New Union, North Coffee, um, and Hillsborough. Yeah. And sometimes I have to have more than one.
Right. My point is, if, if the taxpayers are gonna pay for this, uh, and it's not serving every child because probably a lot of the kids that need this service are going home. They don't have a way, anybody picking them up. And that's my problem with taxpayers funding a program like this, that a lot of the kids that need it aren't getting it. And, uh, and I'm not, I'm thinking it's a wonderful program. I'm not saying that. It's just that sometimes we throw our money at the wrong, in the wrong direction. If we're looking, you know, we're looking at test scores, we're looking at all this. Now, the kids that need this are not there, you know? And, uh, it, it's sad. And of course, I know that this, you know, we talked about it, I think, at the Hillsborough meeting we had. And, um, you know, it's sad that transportation can't be provided, but it can't be. But that's my, that's one concern I have, is that we're paying teachers, you know, teacher's salary to work with these children. And a lot of the kids are already at, at grade level or above. And, uh, and there's a lot of ta, a lot of people that are paying taxes that their kids aren't getting to take this opportunity.
Yes, that's a valid point. Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying that the accountability for the teachers just goes along with their classroom? There's no, there's no pre-test for child A and at the end of the program, what child A did during that time?
Yes, so this year, in the beginning of the program, we did, um, a reading assessment. Ca, and on top of what they already do, we did a reading assessment.
That was in the program that you did this?
Yeah, that was in, that was in the Excellence program. Um, but that's it.
Right.
Yeah, we, cause we needed some kind of data.
Yeah.
So it was just...
And that's what we had done.
So you did that at the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, and then, and then we did, in December, we did another assessment. And then we'll do another one in the springtime we were doing through. Yeah, that's just the Excellence kids.
So do you have those results from August to December?
I do. I don't, I didn't bring them with me, cause I was just doing this.
I think we got them in December at the board meeting.
Yeah.
Cause she had the data. That, that was when, because when we initially passed it right at the start of the school year, December was the turning point of, hey, we gotta see some kind of results. And that was some of the stuff you were getting.
Is that something you've emailed?
I don't know. I think I printed it out and give you all, but I can share that with y'all. Yeah.
Tanya, do we, um, have any idea for the most part, we were talking about teachers, um, and travel time sometimes? If they, were we, do you, did you have a pretty good situation where teachers at that school were able to stay after-school at that particular school and not have to travel to another school to...
Yes, sir.
To be a part of the program?
I only have, um, one teacher that actually, um, is at the middle school that goes to East Coffee. She used to, when she, last year and for a couple of years, she was at the middle school. But we kind of cut the program a little and the number of staff because we were, uh, funding. Um, so she went to, we have one teacher that goes to East Coffee and she starts at three-thirty. So that's why some of the times are different when teachers start.
How, how long do you have before you could hopefully reapply for the...
It's twenty-twenty-six when it opens.
So next year?
Yeah.
One, one more year?
Yeah.
So, what would we need to do to approve it? And this is probably more of an April question than anything. Do we build this into the budget and then approve the, um, you know, the, the, the fund, the hit on fund balance? Or, you know, or do we need to approve the whole program as a board?
So my general thought is, I would probably need some idea of how, of which plan you wanted so I could build a budget. So, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't wanna build three different bu, cause it's gonna be encumbered in the big budget packet you get.
Right.
Um, so I don't wanna particularly build three of different scenarios within the normal budget. So like, if you could just give me a general idea, but I think what we would need to do is approve it. Like, like we did the vote for the program we're doing right now. You guys maybe make a motion and...
We would probably have to do it in the, uh, March.
March.
She plugged it in.
And that way I would...
Right. And then we would, we would approve the program. And then you'd build it into the budget from there.
With a general idea, I guess, of which revenue plan we want to go with. Because I will need to know that as far as calculating the fund, like, hit the fund balance and all that.
There's a revenue component.
Yeah, that would be very important to know what you're, what you think you're gonna charge.
Right.
And that would have to build the budget or not, yes.
And, you know, whether you'd even plan on taking it from fund... And, you know, whether you'd even plan on taking it from fund balance or we build it into the budget. Yeah, I mean, that's, you know.
Well, it'll be, it'll, it'll hit fund balance because it's an additional expense if the revenue doesn't support it.
Right.
It's automatically gonna be a hit to fund balance.
Okay, so we don't just budget for that amount. We, we'd have to anticipate fund balance.
Right.
Okay.
Now, we could have other revenues that would help balance that, but.
More than likely, it's gonna be a fund balance hit, but it's gonna be in the general budget that we've got for the whole entire year that we're getting ready to do. So, and to streamline the work on her instead of having multiple budgets that she's presenting, well, if you do this, 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 or this. We already know we're gonna have one presented to us probably that's showing a three percent pay, correct?
Yep, that's later in the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um.
And just so y'all know, um, just so y'all don't think I've been sitting around doing nothing. I have, I'm working on two, um, grants.
We think that every day.
But these grants are not.
Bring that up, Tanya.
These grants that I'm working on currently, I'm partnering with, um, Recovery Court, the Prevention Coalition, and, uh, Diabetes Foundation Grant. And these will not be able to, say, fund this program, but it will be able to supplement. I've been asking for like positions for, um, staff to come in and offer physical activity and nutrition classes, which can take, you know, some off of what we have to pay for, so.
So we may have some offsetting revenue sources, but nothing guaranteed.
And again, remember, this could stay an annual thing.
Right.
Because we're eligible in twenty twenty-six again to apply again and hope.
Exactly.
You have to keep in mind too that.
Everything's going downhill in education.
Dream on.
It's really competitive.
Very competitive.
So I don't think that, you know, going forward, I'm not sure that we can really count on getting that grant.
I doubt it.
No, but there's always hope.
That, that, yeah, that, so, you know. And we need to be prepared to not get it.
I totally agree. I'd rather definitely be prepared, don't think you're gonna get it.
Then it's a, it's a present.
Yeah, nothing's for sure.
I also think too, you know, if you're gonna work with your budgets here and you, you're gonna have to, if you have to take something out of fund balance, keep in mind that these figures are based on speculations of whom I may attend or may not attend. So that number may go up, it may go down. If it were to go down, then there have, maybe have to be adjustment to the, to our portion of it. Uh, or if it goes up, that could be adjustment the other way to it possibly.
Now, I will say too, the last couple of years that we had ESP, it was not, it did not self-sustain it. Like the, the income, we, we always took a hit in budget for that. So even though like she's built, and I appreciate her for building one, even though she's built a zero cost one, it, that's probably not going to happen. So just keep that in mind. No matter what you pick, this is very, very much an estimate. And the, and the, the last two years of ESP were, were, it was hard, hard to try to make it balance.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we'll put it on the March agenda and, and vote to approve.
One of them.
One of them.
That way you know something to work.
And that gives me a plan of, of kind of where to go with the budget.
Okay, that works. Yeah, we can do that. So Melissa is here, but hopefully she's watching our video.
She was just here.
She was just here.
Any other questions for me?
I think we have a game plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jennifer and Beth and Holly for.
Yeah, thank y'all. Don't forget about Chris down there. He's, he's a minority.
And Chris too, you know.
Chris is a minority.
Were you on that, were you on that committee too?
He is.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
These are new.
That's all right. That's all right.
You don't wanna forget the minority or nothing.
Yeah, that's right. All right, next item on the agenda is Mr. Gilly.
I'm gonna really make this fast. Really, really fast.
Well, you got some paperwork here that you presented us with.
I have, and I think everybody's got a copy. I've got, uh, just two things here. That's all I've got. Uh, both of these are online also to be viewed in the, uh, work session documents. These are just examples of the things I've been talking about for four or five years here when it comes to athletics and this system-wide athletic director, as I call it. Uh, this Williamson County, there, uh, that was a really, that was basically their job posting when they were looking for the current, uh, system AD that they have. Uh, if you had a chance to read that and read over it, that gives you a pretty good idea of what this position is and what, uh, how it could benefit and help. Uh, from continuity all the way through elementary, all the way through your high school levels. Uh, we have a lot of athletic participation and a lot of different, uh, sports and things. Last count I had, I think we've got sixteen at the high school and eleven at the middle school, different sports.
We've got twelve, eleven, but you may be close.
Yeah. So that's, uh, that's a lot of different, different things and a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of monies travel through athletics. I think we do a great job of logging and auditing, but I don't think we have a good, clear picture that helps everybody fully understand how much help the community actually does for our school system when it comes to athletics and how much boosted money runs through. You know, we're, we, we stay on top of that and, and just to have that ability of that person to keep continuity between every, every one of our schools, all of our programs, even our local recreation leagues. And, and also be a, uh, tool right here in central office for readily available information for directors, deputy directors, board members, in board meetings. All of that would be a, a highly beneficial tool, I think, we could really use, especially as large as we're getting in our system. Most, most, uh, most three thousand students to upwards to ten thousand students have system-wide ADs when they have multiple schools and scattered out throughout their system. They have one, they usually try to have one to keep continuity between everyone. And, uh, that was just an example. I'm a little behind. I was behind getting this out to everybody. Uh, I have a lot more information and, and more job copies, examples of job descriptions throughout the state. Uh, I think I got up to sixty-four systems in the state of Tennessee have a system-wide athletic director that oversees all the other athletic directors at the other schools in conjunction with principals. And they're a one-stop shop for information for administration. There's great job descriptions. Uh, of course, I'm, I'm still gathering and compiling all that data. You know, this is, uh, this is something I don't think we've ever, it's never happened here. But I think it's getting close to the time and definitely we're the size and we have enough going on when it comes to athletics. Uh, I think it's definitely something we should maybe, uh, look at.
Would the goals be to have this athletic director, um, um, on hand for next school year?
Uh, that would be, that would be wonderful. Of course, if you, if that be the case, I mean, Mr. George would probably correct me if I'm wrong. But I think, uh, I think that would start with a, uh, I can't remember if we'd need to do the job description first or approve of the position first. And then we'll have to work on the job description and then work on a budget.
I think you have to prove a job description before you would decide whether you want it or not. Yes, you, the board would have to prove, since it's a new position, you'd have to prove a job description and then go from there with it.
Instead of the position in front of it.
I think that's correct.
And then we would have to look at budgeting to see if we can even actually do it.
For information right now, of course, we have three athletic directors in the system. There's two at the high school part-time and one at the middle school. Uh, the board right now is paying out, uh, right at twenty thousand dollars for those three individuals. The high school assistant principals, uh, get eight percent of their salary and that's based on the experience, et cetera, et cetera. And then the middle school, uh, his is a little bit higher. His is thirteen percent, but he's also in charge of field maintenance. So that makes a difference too. So you'd need to kind of decide where you want to go and what their responsibilities might be. Of course, remember what, uh, Williamson County has about six, eight, or ten high schools. Telahoma has a full-time A director, I think.
I talked to, uh.
Yeah, he's just at the, he's just at the high school.
Yeah, I talked to a lot of them. Olive is all of the whole system. At the Telahoma, yes.
I talked to, uh, it, it, I asked Mr. Gilly last night. I called a lot of, over the past thirty years, I guess, since Crethan's been involved and stuff. I called, uh, about eight today around here. Lincoln County, uh, they've got an assistant principal that's their AD. Uh, Lawrenceburg, they've got an assistant principal that's their AD. In Rutherford County, uh, their assistant, they've got some assistant principals that are their ADs. But talked to, uh, and all three of those that I talked to, like Robert said, it's, uh, that's something that they're looking at going to as well. Uh, Bradley County is, uh, they have just a system-wide athletic director, but they've got, uh, Cleveland and, uh, Walker Valley over there and they've all got a single, uh, athletic director. And so I, I agree with Dr. Gilly that, uh, that it's a, uh, it's an AD.
Thank you.
It's, it's, it's something that everybody's trying to go to because it's just, it takes out a lot of the miscommunication with things. Uh, and, you know, and I've, I put out some calls, but I, I just talked to Robert yesterday because this is something that he is, he is obviously put together. And I, I didn't want to, uh, step on his toes, but I, we, we as a board is, we all do, try to work together. And, uh, I use some of my contacts and, uh, the guy in Bradley County, uh, that I talked to, he said that, uh, most of the schools in Knoxville is going to it as well. It's just a system statewide thing, as Robert has already pointed out that.
I talked with Dr. Stevens over in Telahoma at the toss meeting last week. And of course, uh, Coach Olive is there, a full-time athletic director for the whole school system, which is basically the high school and two middle schools. Um, his salary is based on his teacher's salary plus a supplement, whatever you come up with. And I didn't ask her what that, what that amounted to. But, uh, the athletic director, of course, it talks about it to hear a lot of things that, that they need to know about and need to have. Uh, it's gotten to the point now almost where, uh, there's so much paperwork in getting eligibility standards. And if this law passes, which I hope doesn't, that you're gonna get a, a, one free transfer, uh, from one school to another, uh, that's gonna create more paperwork. But having been an athletic director in a small school, which was a junior high school at the time, I know, and I was assistant principal, it, it took up a lot of time that you don't realize, I guess. And, and right now, uh, there's things that, that has to be done. It has to be done now. You can't wait till this time next week to get some things in.
That is, that is exactly.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Derek Goins is the system-wide AD in Williamson County. And that's some of the information I, I emailed y'all that I, I just, he hadn't seen it yet. He's just very busy.
That's what I ran into today.
Yeah, he was very busy. He said, look, I want to get it, I want to get it to you because I want to, I want to present to you guys a pros and a cons.
Yeah.
Approach to looking at this. And he said, there's a whole lot more pros than there are cons. Cons. And especially, like you say, for them, yes, large systems have it. This was just the only one that actually posted good literature of the position and what it entails and all that good stuff. Uh, he's, he's put me together some great information and I'm gonna make sure that I can get it to everybody in a timely manner.
Yeah. Brad, like I said, Bradley, guy I talked to today was one of Crethan's buddies and he's with Bradley County and he's in athletics over there. And that's Bradley County obviously is a pretty big system. And that, that's something that he talked about, just as Robert was talking about. It, it's gonna come to the point, and they also hired, he had an assistant, pretty much a secretary that, that had to do a, a lot of the work too. So, because it, it is, uh, like, you know, Dr. Powell and Dr. Gilly said, you know, there's still, that's a, uh, that's a lot of paperwork that's gonna be coming up, so.
When, when you're talking about this, are you talking about still keeping a middle school AD and a high school AD as well as add a whole nother position? I'm just curious. I don't know what you're thinking.
Yes, that's what it is. This guy, this is the, this is the head chief of athletics, other than sort of the director. And it's just like Williamson County's, the job reports to the assistant superintendent of secondary schools. That's, uh, that's pretty high.
Well, my thinking is that this system-wide athletic director would cover elementary because that's elementary basketball.
Also, it's, and, and like the Williamson County example, they recommend, and it's, it's from elementary all the way through high school, especially designed for continuity, but also community relations within recreational sports. So, you know, from our little leagues to our youth football to everybody else, keeping some kind of continuity and.
And this athletic, this, this athletic director would not be, uh, tied to a certain sport. See, right now, we have two ADs, I think, at the high school, and they're both coaches of a different, uh, sport, of a different sport. But, you know, this, this person, you know, we've got all kinds of sports and this would cover everything.
Year round. And they're, they're to know, you know, if you look, on that Williamson County one, which, you know, obviously there's gonna be things we're gonna want to change. But a lot of the stuff is in there, like you were saying about that. And, and things they are even required to do as far as continuing training and education with TWSWA on bylaws, rules, regulations of all sports. And like I say, this, a lot of this paperwork and stuff, it's already a nightmare with, just in Coffee County right now, on our ADs, what they have to deal with with that stuff. And it's only gonna get worse.
Robert, I, I have several things.
I'm sorry, Holly, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I'm interested in seeing the pros and the cons that come in from the other systems and the actual job description. You, you don't really have that with you today, right?
No, that's pretty much just Williamson County. Now, I, I mean, I'd be glad to take it. Everybody shoot me an email of some things they've read in this, because I've, I've got a list myself of how I want to rewrite this to kind of what I think it ought to be around here. But, you know, you can shoot me some ideas and I'll put something together that everybody could consider.
Um, I guess, um, I do have some concerns. Um, I guess my first question is, how does this position benefit the students of Coffee County? And, and I'm not talking about how does it benefit the person that gets the position? How does it benefit the students here in Coffee County?
Uh, as far as benefiting the students, I kind of look at it, uh, I kind of look at it, you know, number one, I'm, I'm looking at a staff and management side of things of this and accountability. Uh, that's another set of eyes that's more detailed into really digging into what's happening with a lot of our sports and athletics around here. Uh, you know, I could see it doing, doing a lot of things from, from, uh, potentially, uh, providing better and safer coaching, safer situations, safer issues, uh.
Safer like, like you talk about, like, uh, digging into like background checks, hiring?
Not hit somebody the wrong way or from things of that nature too.
A position here at Sunford Office, somebody sitting up here.
Overwatching his ADs at his schools.
Would benefit the students of Coffee County in that respect?
I think it would. And many other things. I mean, that's just something that just popped right off the top of my head.
Well, continuity thing is important too.
Well, that, and I mean, when you start, when you start sticking your nose into recreation here around Coffee County and you start trying to work kids and train kids properly all the way up through elementary into middle school, all the way through high school, and you're, you're a, you're a guy here that's charged with this task of making sure everybody's kind of talking to everybody and working from the ground up, you're helping the students. You're preparing them better. You're preparing them safer, hopefully, directly, more directly.
Well, you, you said a, a thing there, if I may, uh, in talking to the guy in Bradley County, hiring.
Yes.
You know, the background checks and stuff, that eliminates you having.
Bad hires.
Well.
And they, they would be over.
I'm not gonna say it eliminates bad hires, but it puts more eyes on the subject.
And, and, and taking more time to, to research hi- hires instead of. instead of just taking the first guy that comes across town or something, you know.
And, and you have, you have a centralized location here, you have a centralized location here that a man knows pretty much every job position that is open within the whole school system. If he's up here, he knows every one of those, and he also knows needs at every one of the schools when it comes to athletics. That's where he can reach out, and he can do some helping with that. When it comes to the hiring process, to fill two, not two birds out one stone. A good teacher that can fill a coaching position that can do this, and know where all those spots and positions are.
So what, what would this position bring to the table that our athletic directors now, there are three of them, we only have one high school, but what, what does this position do that the current athletic directors now aren't getting done?
I just said one right there.
Hiring?
They don't know, they don't know, no, they're hiring, but they don't know all of the opportunities and spaces and positions in which we have throughout the whole system. I mean, could they probably take some more time out of all the paperwork and the stuff that they are currently doing now? Could they take even more time to dig around through the system and try to find, and then try to figure out exactly? They may not even know a lot of the principals, because they're at that school every day.
Well, I, I was under the impression that the two athletic directors we have at the high school actually have time built into their schedules, some planning time specifically for athletic director activities.
Well, but they also-
Carved out into their schedule already.
Where, where at, because that, that means, I understand that, but that means that they've probably got a half a day out because both of the two that we have at the high school are current coaches. So they're tied up with coaching in the afternoons.
I believe this was morning time.
Okay. Well, then in the morning, and they also teach classes, correct?
Yeah, apparently, they have time carved out into their-
So they're using their classroom planning time?
No, I don't, I think this is aside of that, from what I understand.
So they have classroom planning, then they have athletic planning?
I don't know about classroom planning.
Then they teach some, then they do sports sometimes, mostly by one or two o'clock, I think, in the afternoon.
What, coaching?
Best I remember right now, I think both A.D.s at the high school, um, have either three or four periods of teaching, and that varies, I think, from individuals. And then the time that they're not teaching class, they are set toward athletic, uh, schedules. And, I mean, they're, they're considering an A.D., an athletic director. And I don't know that they have the same planning time, I don't know that they have the same-
I was thinking it was dedicated.
Where they're off the same time in the afternoon.
I don't think they're on the same, same, exact same times, I could be wrong on that. They, they do have a period for them to do their P.D. jobs.
And then our, uh, our middle school athletic director, does he get a half a day or two periods a day? He teaches all day.
He doesn't get any planning time for athletics, right?
Yeah, I think they was actually changed a few years back of this year, I think. Because I think he, I think he, right.
One thing you need to think about too, when you start looking at the position and responsibilities, and I don't know how, actually how Williamson County addresses it, and I'm not sure how Telahoma addresses it, but keep in mind that all football games, all basketball games, boys and girls, and all soccer programs, boys and girls, has to have an administrator at the beginning of that ball game, and there has to be, there has to be an administrator there, what they call a player, I mean, a, uh, it doesn't have to be a principal, and most, right now, most of our athletic directors are taking that responsibility. But if you've got a single athletic director, you're probably gonna have to have someone at one of the other schools that would fill in at that, at that position as, as the, um, game director is what it boils down to. Because they have to meet before the, each game with the officials, with the, um, uh, medical staff, and with the security people. So, the way our schools are set up now, I don't think we play that many ball games on the same night, particularly in basketball, that's your biggest, and soccer, probably, they do play the same nights a lot of times. But what you, and I didn't ask Dr. Stevenson how, how Coach Olive does that, whether he has someone, if he has to be at the middle school, that he has someone there at the high school that fills in as his game day, uh, administrator, but keep that in mind, yeah.
Football, football, soccer.
Basketball.
Basketball, and another one on the same, uh, golf and something else on the same night.
But, yeah, that's what I'm saying, and, uh, but all, the, the football, the basketball, and the soccer have to have a game administrator, but TGLA guidelines.
So I-
The others do not.
I guess, you know, I see it maybe a little differently than you, Robert, um, in, in all due respect.
That's part of a democracy, that's perfect, that's what it's supposed to be.
I appreciate the work that you have done on it. Um, I just see other areas in our system that I feel like, for lack of a better term, maybe we've sort of neglected along the way. We don't have art programs in our elementary schools. Um, that's something, you know, that thirty-five years ago, Manchester City Schools put into place. Um, and, and I think that is a, a big place that we would want to invest in, is that. Um, we've got a lot coming down the pipe, as, you know, we've all talked, we're actually paying two directors right now, but we've got two major renovations on tap for our elementary schools. Um, we're talking about metal detectors, I don't know how close we are to that, you know? And that's a huge expense, um, but we've also got school, um, club sponsors, um, throughout the district that are actually doing things like FBLA, Culinary Arts, DECA, um, SGA. They don't get compensated a dime for what they do. And a lot of that is done during the school day, uh, but a lot of it is not. Just like we were talking about, there's a DECA trip, uh, right, field trip right now, that's, that's an overnight trip. And those teachers are taking those tasks on, and they are not compensated for that extra, from what I understand. And if, if we've got the extra money to create another executive level of administration here at the central office to oversee athletic directors who are already supervised by a building principal, I guess my question is, why can we not compensate all these school sponsors, club sponsors, who are doing this, you know, out of the goodness of their hearts, or on their own time? They don't get anything. Um, I feel like that our, our academics right now is where we should really focus our funding and our money, because that's where we're not proficient. Uh, as far as athletics, we've got, we've got enough high school basketball coaches to, to create a first and second string team. Um, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with having a lot of coaches, I think it's a good thing, but we've got a pretty robust athletic department, in my opinion, in this system. I don't really feel like we're lacking. Um, I think if you include freshman coaches, our football team has around eleven on staff, our baseball team at the high school has five, um, softball has five coaches. We are, I feel like we are rich in athletics. Um, and, but in academics, we're struggling in proficiency. And if, I'm just saying, you know, if we've got the extra money to create another position up here in the executive branch, I guess you could call it, for a school system, um, if we've got it for that, I, I feel like our priorities would be more aligned if we could use that money towards the academic side of things. That's just my opinion.
How about if we do this? I mean, we, we would first have to have, before we did anything else, we'd have to have a position description we would have to approve. And at that point, if you approve it, then you proceed on. If you don't approve it, and then, then that, that subject is dead and-
That's it. If you throw a drug, job description out with an intention, and it's voted down, that's it. If it's not, then it's, then that's-
Yeah, and then, and that way, we would put it up for vote at a, at a boarding.
I strongly disagree, because I'm in athletics, I know how many coaches there are, I know how many students actively participate in athletics in Coffee County schools, and we have three athletic directors to keep it in line.
Is that, what percentage of students?
We have over a thousand students.
That are athletes?
An athlete, athletics.
How many, how many students do we have district-wide? I mean, are we looking at twenty-five percent?
Almost forty-five hundred. So that's twenty, twenty-five percent.
So about twenty-five percent, so, you know, I guess what I'm saying is-
How many, how many do, and I mean, I love the FBLA teacher, I love Ms. Prater, love her to death, always will. I think she gave me my first paddling. Love her. Love, love, love her to death.
Y'all just remember your first paddling.
But there's a difference, there's a difference, there's a difference with size and the amount of rules and regulations that are behind athletics, of what we must follow, and we must be watching, and we must stay on top of, and we must prepare, because we're not gonna get smaller in athletics.
Well, let me ask this, if this should get approved, is there, is it a need for two at the high school then? If we've got an overall athletic director? I mean, because that, this person would be taking away, taking away responsibilities from-
Possibly not, but I think, I think what would play into that, in my, just my personal opinion, is being a coach and athletic director as well. I think that would play a part in if you needed two or one.
But what I'm saying, we've got two over there now, if we, if you get a, a system-wide athletic director, that athletic director is gonna be taking a lot of the responsibility of the high school, of the athletic director.
Ms. Jones, uh, Paul, uh, Mr. Parsley sent a text. During the, the sports that they are over, they get two periods that's free for A.D. The other one gets one, so they then swap. But truly, there is one A.D. at the high school, and it's just a split position. They, they took one and split it, so that there's, there's actually one-
So we could do one.
So ultimately, they get three periods right now per day. If you want to think of it that way, when you put them together, it's three periods, a day that they do for A.D. work.
You could do one other thing, like these other schools have done too. Lincoln County, Lawrenceburg, Rutherford County, make an assistant principal athletic director.
I was gonna say, Mr. Andrew, up until, and I don't know when, I don't know when you changed over to two A.D.s, but, uh, early on in the, in the system, the A.D. was an assistant principal, that was part of their position.
Assistant principal, we could do that, we could pull that off.
Now, what their, what their responsibilities were as assistant principal, I have no idea, well, I do too, but, but they, they were there full-time at the high school in an, as assistant principal position, and did not have any coaching responsibilities. Uh, and personally, I think that's good.
I do too.
That's my personal philosophy.
Out of five people that I talked to, five, five schools today that I talked to, and that's all I had time to talk to about, but out of all of those five, that's what they do. Their, their principals are, are the assistant athletic directors. That way, and, and out of four of them that I talked to, because for that very reason, like Holly and Free has talked about, it, it, they have that, because you're, you're, you're not taking away a teacher's position. They need, that's what they said today, they need the teacher, the teaching position. And with an assistant principal, you know, what have we got, five? How many, how many assistant principals we got at the high school?
Many what?
Four.
Three.
Four, I believe, four.
I think he's correct, yes.
You have three, one for, you have one for each grade?
Yes.
And then you have, um, an administrator, he, um, Jason Creek's jobs, what is that? He's, he's classified as, but he's not an, he's not a assistant principal. He's over testing instructions.
Three.
I, I guess my point was just that, like, if we, maybe this is something that we want to look at down the road, um, possibly, but, you know, a, as far as priorities and how money is delegated at this time, I just don't see how in the world we could justify creating a position for another level of athletic director when we're in the situation that we're in academically, and we don't even have art programs in our elementaries. You know, we, we list the things that we need, these capital outlay projects, bleachers, all this LED lighting, et cetera. Why would we want to create an executive level position, um, why would that be at the top of our priority list right now? I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking safety, you know, metal detectors, which could actually save lives. And I'm not saying that athletics does not enhance the academic experience, I do believe it does. I have a daughter, and she is involved in two sports, so, uh, I, I'm, I'm an athletic, athlete's mom. So, and I do believe that it does, but I do not believe at this time that it would be wise to use our money to prioritize another job to oversee athletic directors who already have a supervisor in their building. That's just my opinion, and I just want to encourage citizens of Coffee County, teachers, coaches, administrators, parents, reach out to us as board members and, and let us know how you feel about it. You know, I mean, you, you might shed some light on it, please, please tell us what you would like, what you, you think that our priorities should be, because we want to know from, from everyone.
Just, just a reminder that, that, um, it's a multi-step process. You'd have to approve the, uh, the, the position, uh, description, and then you would have to then approve the, the budget for that. So you can have, we could approve the position description for an athletic director, but not necessarily the budget for it. That could be down the road too, and I think that's kind of where, where we might want to go.
Yeah, I've, this-
There's two, two, you know.
I'll tie, I'll, I'll get this up and put together, send me, I know two or three's already sent some good recommendations, I'll plug them in, put together a packet, and, uh, everybody can-
Yeah, and it'd be interesting to hear what, what folks, folks out in YouTube.
It is what it is, how it goes, all that good stuff.
Yeah, so, that might, you know, kind of in the interest of time, because we're going for a record here.
The door's in front of it, and I can't even see it.
Yeah, so we might want to close debate on this for now. So, so, uh, so Robert will work on a description, we'll get it on the agenda and go from there. So next up, uh, is update on capital projects, and that's gonna be April and Mr. Shores.
So I put together a, um, at the request of someone on the board, I put together this document, um, that shows kind of the, uh, capital outlay, because outlay, it shows what we spent on capital outlay, what our budget was, and then, um, furniture, and then what was in the restricted capital fund. So I'll start with, um, capital outlay. So every year, I budget the same amount, which is two hundred thousand. Um, so that money is not for a specific project, it's just general funds to spend on some of the items that you can see where it says description of expenditures. So we put, we just start there, and then if there is a project that comes up, like the paving, door locks, or the window laminate are great examples, then those would be brought to the capital projects committee. And Kelvin, please correct me if I'm wrong, if the capital project committee wants to put it on the board meeting, then at that point, I would have to find funds to add to our capital projects budget in order to do those projects.
And that is large, large ticket items.
Yes, like, so like, we would never budget a large ticket item unless I knew about it in the prior year, and that's very odd when you think about building a budget in March. You don't know what's gonna come up in July, April, May, whatever, in the next. So those items are usually, um, brought before the board because they're large and, um, approved at that time, and then I, and then the funding is also found within the budget or fund balance. So that's kind of the general idea of how the capital outlay budget works. Are there specific questions, um, about this part of the sheet?
I think kind of the idea is to keep this updated, and it may not change a lot, but-
It changes every day, almost, well, almost every, I'd say at least once a week it will change. Depending on if there's something that a school needs, or something breaks, like, it, it's pretty common it changes.
So then to present an updated version every month at the board meeting with the director's report.
I can do that, and so what I'll do is, I'll kind of base it on the same timeline of the month I've disclosed, and that way you get a true accurate picture of kind of where we closed at.
Okay.
Because if I try to do it in the middle of the month, or at a certain time in the month, it will, it'll be different the next day, does that make sense?
Yeah. And I know a number of board members have been asking for this, this was my first crack at it, so, so if you, if there's something else you want to see on here, let us, let us know, and we can, we can change it. But this is, you know, first draft, so to kind of get the information back to the board, so.
Mr. Ballard, back in November, the, the board asked me to, each, each board meeting to start, give an update on the capital projects. And I told you then, I'd be happy to, because I, I enjoy this stuff.
Yeah.
And each time I've had it prepared, and each time it's been, well, that's adjourned and we're moving on. And, and that's where we've been.
I've never seen that.
I, yeah.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that.
When you done have?
Every meeting since the November meeting, I've had the stuff ready. Now, I wait for the, the chairman to, to ask me to, to move forward and, and go through it, because you go to the director's report, and I was gonna be after that. Well, usually what comes after director's report is adjourned, and you don't ask. So I, I don't, I don't interject, but I will be glad to-
Well, maybe we need to put it on there, deputy director's report.
If you would like to, that would be perfectly fine.
Agenda to have that on there as part of the director's report.
I will be glad to share with you the updates on any of our projects that we have going on.
I like showing the money with it now.
But showing the money with it, and then you-
I'm not done talking, so whenever y'all are, I'll finish my report.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You waited long enough, talk.
No, 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 I think the house got something to say.
Okay, but I've been remiss in not, not specifically asking, but.
Well, I, I don't mind sharing it, I've got the stuff together.
But you can always jump in and, and say, hey, I got this good information I wanna share. You're always welcome to.
Usually by the time it comes up, everybody's ready to go home too.
Nah.
Chairman Ballard.
But that's the exciting part of the meeting, is capital projects. That gets everybody's attention back, isn't it?
I had two agendas here that, that were developed apparently by the capital projects committee meeting. There was one on December, oh, excuse me, on October the third of twenty-four.
Right.
I don't know whether y'all have a copy of those or not, and it, it gives several items there that, that the committee were apparently was looking at, but then there was another meeting on December the twelfth that shows a different, in some cases, a different set of priorities, so I don't know whether the capital outlay committee needs to meet again and decide what they wanna put in this, because there's, of course, there's a lot of things on capital outlay money that wasn't on either one of these.
Right.
Uh, some of them were and some of them were not, so I don't know what.
Well.
You know, y'all may have a good.
I'm gonna compare the two. I was, I was at these meetings here, and of course, we did send these, these items. I do remember, you know, they've, they've been to the main board. A lot of them have been approved by the main board.
Right, I guess, I don't know.
To pursue and carry on, yeah, the lighting and all that kinda stuff.
Lighting's not been approved.
It hasn't been approved. The lighting has been.
We didn't vote on that?
Uh-uh.
We just approved to move the money to, to do it, but the lighting has not been brought to the board for, like, the bids have not been brought.
The bids haven't been, but it was pushed forward to, to send for bids, yes.
Um, I'm, I'm out on that one, I don't know the answer.
Remember the guy from, uh, Miss U is here?
Musco.
Musco.
We stumped you on one, April.
He was here, and that, we didn't, we didn't approve it.
Well, we also have, also, if y'all think about, about, about the bleachers, if it's a large construction project, which.
You had to put it out.
We have to put it out for bid. And so that's kinda why we switched gears on the lighting and the bleachers, I think that's why the, the holdup has happened, because, and it's my fault, because, you know, I went to this meeting, brought back this new information, and obviously, we don't wanna, we don't wanna delay it, but we also wanna do it the correct way. So that's kind of what the holdup is with the lighting and the bleachers.
I'd be glad to go over every bit of this if you want me to.
Well, and, and, yes, yes, let's, let's just add it to the agenda, we'll make it right as part of the director's report, and that way I won't forget.
Right, he's talking about right now.
Oh, right now?
I'm ready to go home.
What did I say?
Well, let, let me ask you, what are we discussing right now? Just adding the, what are we discussing right now, Kelvin? Just adding the money to the report of this, and then y'all two agreeing it'll be on the agenda next time?
I will do it however you want me to.
Is that what we're doing?
I will go over it now, I will go over it at the board meeting.
I don't think we're talking about likes and polls and actual bleachers and all that.
I just wanted to finish talking about my report.
We're talking about the information, because basically, I've gotten feedback from, from everybody that says, we've talked about things, we voted on things in meeting, I've lost track of where we're at, so this is, the whole thing is, keep track of it here, and then you can discuss it, um, in, in the board meeting, and I think that would be awesome.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine.
Follow me squirrels, stick together, same path.
Yeah, so, and I think.
I would like, I would like to suggest, if possible, to have another capital projects committee meeting and decide what you wanna put on here as possibilities, because like I said, there's things on here that are not on here yet, and there's been some, and there's been, there's two big projects coming up that, uh, are gonna.
Right.
Knock a pretty good lick in this, in, in this budget.
Right, this is a wrap, so we need to.
Kelvin won't be able to sleep tonight, we don't let him speak.
They're all in line, it's, it's all in line, if, if you want me to share, I'll share with you where it's in line, we, it.
Well, then we just, we just, the bids back on the bleachers, let's start with that, what do we get on the bleachers? You got the bid back?
Let, let's, let's just go through these, all of these, I, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, they ain't got the bid on, on asphalt yet. They ain't been like three or four, but.
Okay.
All right. Medical locks, they have been ordered.
We're on this sheet.
I, I won't, you want me to go down to the other sheet, I don't care.
Now, what are you, what are you looking at? Are you looking at these or the budget?
This one real quickly, it won't take us long. The, the medical locks, they have been ordered, um, we have a change in the representative I work with, so we're having to do a keying situation with a new person, and, and that's in, in works right now. We're hoping to put those in, or get them installed, I'm hoping during the summertime, cause it wouldn't make sense to do it now and, and having to do, read keys on stuff. The Hillsboro abatement, that's asbestos abatement, taking asbestos out of the building, uh, this actually took place in June of last year, it shouldn't be on this list, there was a, a. Uh, it's been fixed, but that's what that is, it's, it's abatement of asbestos out of the gym.
So that's, that's done.
It, it's taken care of, it's done. Deerfield, Deerfield parking lot, you have approved it, it's been given to Tinsley's, Tinsley's has gotta work in the time to get it, the work done, they have until June the thirtieth to get that done. CTE building sidewalk and canopy, that was whenever the, the building was being built, they were not gonna change it, or it was not to take out the sidewalk that's between the CTE building over to the new one, and it, it was, is, is gonna look junky. So I wanted it right, and it cost us a little money to get it fixed right, so that's what that was.
That's done?
That is done.
We haven't paid it, so the dates you see on the report is the date that we paid the final payment.
But the job is done. CTE building brick increase in the concrete floors, uh, we had to do an increase in the brick allotment to get it to match what the brick is on the other part of the building, we didn't want it to not match, so there was a little increase there, the concrete floor, they had planned on putting in a, oh my gosh, I keep thinking what it's called, uh, just a, a ceiling, but we put in the, the flooring that it should be done for now on, it's done, they're, they're using it, so.
Still mine, it don't have, on completion date, it don't have my, it don't have a date on it.
That's because we haven't paid the final invoice.
Like she said, it's not been paid, it's finished, but it's not been paid.
A lot of these projects were done with the ISM grant, and so we picked, capital outlay picked up part of these, part of these project, part of the big building, so part of the budget was in the ISM grant, the other part was in capital outlay, so we won't mark these as closed until we pay the final invoice for everything.
Maybe what we need to have is another column that says work completed.
Thank you.
Date, and then final payment or project completed date, but would just be final payment.
Get out there.
How about that?
And I think that's what was confusing me too, with CTE, I thought that had it separate, I didn't know, so you're saying part of it came out of a grant for the CTE building, and we picked up the rest?
We picked up a little pieces of it, ISM paid for a million dollars of the building, and then, um, Mr. Skipper had to pick up a little bit in his vocational part of his budget that he was carrying over for, and then capital picked up.
And he didn't have enough to do the finishing on some of this, so we took care of it.
It was, it was almost a one point five, little over one point five million dollar deal, they only got a million from the state, and this and that, so that's.
So we picked up about fifty, sixty thousand.
We, we picked up some, yes.
Yeah, we knew that.
Then the CTE building HVAC water lines and the meter, I'm not sure what the HVAC is on this, uh, Ms. Nelson, but the water lines, that was taking the domestic water off of the, um, fire hydrants, and also it was running through all the area where we're getting ready to pave, so that needed to be done before the paving, cause we don't wanna do it after getting done paving. So that, that's what thirty-four thousand, uh, the board did have to approve that. Uh, CHS exit devices and push plates, this is a security thing, basically putting in new devices to, to secure the building even more. Uh, floors and wall repair, we had some floors that was, uh, yeah, I, I keep forgetting, there's two different parts, things with concrete, one is a ceiling and the other is.
Poxey.
No, it's epoxy, but, but we, we fixed the floors in the bathrooms in the, at the high school, as well as a side closet that had to be done, so that's what the six hundred twenty dollars was. Door repair and replacement, that was at Raider Academy, it's the front entrance, it's once again to make it more secure, put stronger, heavier doors up, if you ever go into Raider Academy, you see new doors, new hardware, it, it's a whole lot stouter and stronger for the safety of the school. CTE building environmental testing, this board, uh, chose to do the methane testing, this is only a small portion of it, because some of it was done actually before, in June, before the July first, uh, switch over fiscal year. Window laminate, uh, it's been ordered, uh, we're waiting on them, the measurements is all there, it's all taken care of there, but they are getting ready to get that started, and as a piggyback off the Williamson County, uh, CTE door access to the main building, this is a safety issue, uh, and that's all I'm gonna say in the open meeting here, uh, but we're, we're getting it fixed and taking care of. Um, down here at the bottom, you have the CCHS, uh, paving, we have opening bids coming up on this Thursday for the backside of the high school, that includes drainage, uh, striping and paving, as well as some grade work as well, uh, so I'm hoping those come in low, that will be on the March agenda as the plan for approval to move forward there, uh, if you decide to go that direction. Yes, Scotty?
Some of this stuff on this bid, we didn't, we, it was never brought up to the board. I looked at the plans, and, and there's the whole parking lot on the backside, when did we decide to do that?
That was on the agenda for the capital projects committee, which happened on October the third.
Yeah, that was, that was right after.
Right here it is.
Yeah, we met right there, right bef- right before, it's either right before or right after that.
That was on the, the parking lot in front of the garage, doors not all the way back there.
No, it was, no, all the time, it was all the way around the building.
And, and if everybody remembers, when we were there doing our tour, I took you out there, and I walked around, and I said, every bit of this will be paved, this is part of the parking lot area.
That's when everybody went.
Drainage and everything.
Fall retreat.
Fall retreat, yeah, and, and we, I showed you everything, and that, so that, if you remember, we was talking about it back then. Uh, going to CHS bleachers, the bid was open today, um, I'm planning on it being on the agenda for March as well, March tenth agenda, uh, for approval and the decision of what direction you wanna go as a board on that, uh, so that, that touches all of those. Switching over here to the capital projects, uh, committee meetings, uh, once again, you have the parking lot, you have the Deerfield damaged area parking or paving, uh, the LED lighting, the LED, ED lighting was already approved for one point five million to be put over in amendment over here for lighting, but that's as far as we've gone. I already had prices, but we had to change it like April said, and now I have a meeting with Wald on Friday about engineering, architectural work to get the drawings from an electrical engineer, because we have to have that for bidding it out, so I'm, I'm gonna be talking to them on Friday, I'm hoping to have that on your agenda, March the tenth, a proposal to move forward or not with, uh, their, their services on that. Uh, gym bleachers on here, then the walls, which you just approved at the last board meeting, the walls, doors, and partitions for the nineteen seventy-five addition, or building at the high school, up to sixty thousand dollars by the hour for that job, so y'all already approved that, but there are your works on that.
That's just for drawings though.
That's for drawings.
Need to prove, need to, need to mention that, that's not for the walls.
That was just for the drawings, just for the drawings.
That's just for drawings, yeah.
And, uh, I, I, I just assumed everybody here was part of that and knew that part, but it is for the drawings, and they're gonna be talking to us on Friday as well, and also Paul on that part. Switching over to the other one, that was December the twelfth, the LED lining, which Musco guy came in, had him here just going over things, I do have prices on the Musco lighting for the materials only, but not the labor, because the labor's what we're having to bid out. Um, also, the classroom furniture was discussed, it came up at the board meeting, it was voted down the second time, and that's where that was at, so it was discussed and we left it there. That's it, unless you got any questions?
What was the, the CCHS track improvement?
The, see, uh, the track improvements, there was a hundred thousand dollars when we were doing the lighting that was put over the side to be used on track improvements, and I've not received anything from the track coach and the A.D.s at the high school, they are aware of it, but we're waiting, cause that's, that's the things that's gonna have to be done wherever the ground is dry, cause it's gonna require some concrete and some work done.
Is that where some, maybe some dirt's gonna be brought in, or, you know, like the drop off the side of the track?
It's gonna be trying to add in like pole vault, your, your high jump, your long jump.
Yeah.
Uh, possibly mats if needed, uh, your discus area, your.
Okay.
All those areas, trying to get them up to.
Yeah.
To where they need to be, cause they, they, they look pitiful.
I think what she's, was initially talking about was the cliff around the track.
Yes, where it drops.
On the field.
That was not part of this, no.
Okay, all right.
And part of the problem with that is, you also have, uh, sprinkler heads all around that area, so you're gonna run into some, some things there as well.
Okay.
Okay, on, on this furniture, uh, so we didn't have to approve the central, the.
Good question.
This is the Coffey County High School front office furniture, twenty thousand eight fifty-four.
Correct, we, we had, uh, another, um, counselor, uh, wherever it's below twenty-five thousand, it does not have to come before the board to be approved. Uh, this was done at the, during the summertime, and we had to have some furniture, so we went ahead and took care of the furniture that was in the counselors' and the office areas up at the, at the high school, and I think that was it for that furniture.
So we don't have to approve that?
At that time, if it's under twenty-five thousand, no.
So y'all have the, y'all have the right to buy whatever you want up to twenty-five thousand.
If there is a need, yes.
So basically what happens is, is someone can submit a requisition, like, we'll, we'll put, we'll put in a requisition, so like, for example, Kelvin got, probably got quotes for this, and then he'll brought, he filled out a requisition, or brought it to Stacy, she filled out a requisition, I look at the line to make sure it's, the funding is there, um, and then also make sure the lint, like, it's below the twenty-five thousand threshold, it's a lot of our checks we do in my office, and then once I sign the requisition saying, hey, the funding's there, it's, it's allowable within the budget, that gets put into a purchase order, and then that goes to the director of schools to, to, to approve or not approve.
So Dr. Lawson approved it?
Uh, for eleven twenty, eleven, what, I'd have to look back, but yes, I would say so, because.
I would say so, yeah.
We would've had to order it earlier in the summer.
I guess what confuses me, because we were having to approve the furniture for here.
Because it's over twenty-five thousand.
So, so in other words, if y'all wanted to buy half of it, you could do that without coming before us.
We could buy twenty-five thousand.
It was always ten thousand dollars for years until three years ago, they raised it to twenty-five.
You've got the leeway to, like, once this is budgeted and we approve the budget, then you've got the right to put whatever furniture you want in here without board approval.
If that's the direction I felt like I needed to go, but, but.
But the, of course, the director would have to prove it.
That's correct.
Over, over twenty-five thousand, it goes to the board, anything under twenty-five thousand, we're able to take care of it here in-house.
The director can.
Well, yes, I mean, yes.
So not going back on the, the one that didn't get approved, we can't do anything with that one, so like, if he was to pick apart and say, oh, I'm gonna order this, and I'm gonna order that, and I'm gonna.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
We can't do anything with that, because it was voted down, so.
Right.
Just to make that clear.
All right.
But if you thought ahead of time.
In the bid.
You thought about it ahead of time.
I still wouldn't have done it, because that's not, that, that, that wasn't my purpose.
Well, I didn't say that, I didn't point no finger at you, I was talking about the concept over here somehow.
I guess I should say, that's not the way I work.
Well, I didn't say that's the way you did.
All right, so.
We were conceptually chatting over here. We were conceptually chatting over here.
We never thought about that until you said it.
I guess I should've talked to you first, Robert, she couldn't give me those ways to get around things.
Yeah, yeah, that doctor stuff, right.
So if we add a column on here that says work completion date and payment completion date, would that make this useful for everybody? And then we can just, we will add you to the agenda, so I don't miss you and.
We're gonna call it Kelvin under the agenda.
Capital Projects, I mean.
Well, yeah, I know. I, I think, you know, I mean, from what I've heard from board members, it's important to hear that. So, so I have been remiss in, in not letting you get up there and wax away. Cause we wanna hear about it, so, so, yeah, so thanks for bringing that up. Alright, so Melissa will make sure that's added to the agenda permanently, so. Yeah, as, yeah.
I like it just being called Kelvin.
Capital Projects update, so let's call it Calvin. Starting Kelvin Shores.
Yeah, starting Kelvin Shores.
He can do that.
Put him in Kevin's report.
We're starting to get silly.
Everybody thanks Kelvin, let's, let's put it that way.
They don't know who we're talking about.
Y'all had gave me a headache.
Let's, let's change you, Joe Depp, a little bit, since we're on to April's, uh, April's, um, discussion here. Let's talk real quick about the teacher salary increases.
Are we gonna skip policy committee and timeliness?
No, we're gonna talk about those, but I just wanted to.
Oh, can we skip please?
Talk about, so that April can, as long as she's on her roll, so, so.
Well, I didn't finish our report, but I'll let y'all slide this time.
Yeah.
I think we've talked about it enough.
Yeah, so, but we need to do a teacher salary increase. We need to get to a baseline of fifty thousand by twenty-twenty-seven. Which is gonna require some increases and I understand probably three percent and three percent over the next couple of years. Is that correct?
So that's, that's the ideal. Obviously, I don't have any funding information. We haven't gotten our first estimate from TISA yet.
Right.
That'll hopefully come in this week. Um, so we'll have a better idea at that point, um, what we.
So as far as teachers go, it should be relatively revenue neutral with TISA since they're requiring it, is that?
So basically the base increased, I think I wrote it down, seven thousand two hundred ninety-five. So they did increase the base a little bit to help with the raise, the fifty per, fifty thousand dollar, um, well, by twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, um, basically I think, you know, three percent should be doable. It just depends on, you know, I have to put some, I have to put that after-school program in there. You know, and then if we decide to do it at the athletic director and then we have the art teacher, it just depends on all the things that we've been talking about. And, um.
Right.
Cause you know, everything we talked about tonight has cost money.
But if we didn't do three percent this year, we'd have to do more next year then, right? So.
Yeah, we would have, or we would have to do a flat amount, pretty much.
Okay.
Could you do two and a half, two and a half? I mean.
They have to, they have to be at six.
Oh, it's a six percent, Delta.
To get our scale to where we need to be.
We're six.
I was thinking it was five.
Year zero.
So it's minus that. So three and three, okay.
So we got it, yeah, three and three or, you know, whatever number comes in.
Or two and four.
We've got thirty-eight teachers is, is all that there is and they're not, any of them, it's over. But, uh, the most is, we're just twenty-seven hundred dollars off.
Yeah, so that's why if we had to do flat, like if that was the absolute, say I put the budget together and we could not give a three percent. Or we can only give a two percent this year and next year we couldn't give a three, a four percent. I would just figure out the flat and then everyone would just get a flat, like a flat amount as long as we could, we'd have to do that. We wouldn't have a choice.
Is that just teachers? Is that teachers and administration? Does that include central office? Like who does it include?
So that scale that, or the scale that, there's, there's two scales. There's a certified scale that has everyone that's certified. Which would include your building admin, your admin up here and your teachers.
So principals.
So anyone that's in a certified position.
Yes.
Would be on that same scale. And then we also have a scale for all of our classified employees and they are listed kind of by job. Um, and so they're two different scales. So typically in the past, we've given, and Kelvin, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we've given, tried to give the same amount of raise if we can to both. We've done a lot of work to the pay scales, so some years we've staggered it with, like the year we did. We fixed the pay scale for classified, we maybe only gave them a three percent and then gave a four percent. I'm just using general numbers to certify, to kind of make up the difference. So we can't, I wanna say everyone that's certified is on the same scale. So like if you give a three percent raise, it goes to everyone on that scale.
Is that state required or is that just local, uh, decisions? And I know we did the raises before, but what I'm saying, uh, getting to that.
That's what we've done every year, everyone. Because it would've been real simple for us three years ago to just come in and say, okay, we're just gonna set our base at fifty thousand. Well, you had people that'd been here ten years.
Yeah, I understand that and we've got them, we've already got them raised. And what I'm saying is if the bottom falls out of the sky and we're having to do all this locally. Could it be that we could increase, you know, the teachers, uh, the ones that, that need to be making the fifty? I'm just, I'm just thinking outside the box, that if we didn't have the money to do it for everybody. Could at one point, we, uh, just do those teachers that needed to be up to the fifty thousand mark?
So we could, but you would have a zero, one, two, three year that would make all fifty thousand. And then I don't have that pay scale in front of me, but in year four, they would get like a two hundred dollar raise. But basically they would work with, they would work for us for four years before they got anything. Does that make sense?
No.
Because we can't just, I can't just go change.
No.
I can't go, just go change Kelvin Shores' salary to fifty thousand.
Why not?
Yeah.
Cause we're on pay scales.
Yeah, but, I mean, one of, yeah, but. Yeah, but we don't, it don't have to be, if we, if we're mandated by the state to have every teacher's salary up to fifty thousand dollars. We're not mandated to a pay scale to give that to everybody that's the board, because some counties aren't gonna be able to do that.
We don't.
And, and hopefully, hopefully we can keep doing what we're doing.
Keep in mind, and I understand what you're saying, and if the bottom falls out, we'll have to figure something out. But also TISA gives us a lot of amount of money. So I think last year it was like five hundred and twenty-something thousand dollars. And that, we have to use that on pay ra, pay raises for certified employees.
Right.
For certified or teachers?
For certified, certified, anyone certified counts.
Right.
Okay.
So, but if you, you have to do, I have to do a report to them each year and tell them how we, how we use those funds.
Is there any regulation on non-certified employees and what the, the raises need to be or have to be? Or what the minimum pay scale is for non-certified?
There's nothing, obviously you want to give, cause they're your lowest paid and they're, you know, they're working hard for it and we want to give them.
And that's what really was worked on two, three years ago because they were getting paid so little. And in a percentage raise, we all know that's gonna help your higher end, more than the lower end, so.
I think it's the biggest thing that we're getting, the complaints about is from, from everybody after the seven percent raise is. If y'all get us, if the, the classified gets a three percent raise, then you've gotten a ten percent raise in two years. And the rest of the, the rest of the county hasn't gotten nowhere near that, the other county employees. That's the, that's the complaint that we're getting.
What, outside of schools?
You're talking about outside of schools?
Outside of schools.
I'm not worrying about that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't either.
Inside school system.
Other taxpayers are.
And our people, and our, our people are making the loans.
We got a mandate to do that needs to be fair, in my opinion. It needs to be fair. You could, like I say, you talk about the last step there of, yeah, we could just do the twenty-seven hundred. But then the first person that comes in here and gets hired right now is gonna work here for four years just for a two hundred dollar increase? That's not, I mean.
That's, I mean, as of right now, like if I think about our payroll system and how our salary scale gets loaded into that payroll system. Without just, you know, brainstorming with my payroll girls, that is my only logic on how that, we could accomplish that. Because I would have to take those people off the pay scale and just make them a base salary of fifty thousand. And then somehow figure out, like, I don't, I don't, in my mind, I don't know how to, I hope we don't get to that point.
There, there's been, there's been so many things throughout this whole thing of stepping this pay up over the last, cause this is my, going on my fifth year here. And, you know, I remember the conversations in here about the, the cafeteria employees at eight dollars an hour.
Yes.
We, we had people having, that was willing to work here and work for eight dollars an hour. And that's, that's, I mean, I, I don't even, I don't even pay that to somebody to mow my grass.
And the board has done well on getting the pay scales for the classified and the certified in good shape. So I would hate to see it get torn up. I, I would.
I'm going back to this concept. If we go with the, uh, the voucher program and it says two thousand dollars. You know, the, the state's gonna give two thousand dollars to every teacher. That's just teachers in the classroom. So they're, you know, they're looking, the state looks at teachers differently, you know, they're not on a, you know. And I, and my, I'm not talking about anybody else but teachers. I'm just saying that there's a way that if we had to get them to fifty thousand and didn't have the money for everybody else to, to have that raise. We could do that as a county. That's all I'm saying. And I hope we don't get to that point, but that's what I'm saying.
And I think, Frida, I think everybody kind of agrees with it.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Not necessarily raises go all the way to everyone in the whole system.
Right, and if we're mandated to go to fifty thousand, just do it and go on from there.
I mean, I think I would have to build a whole separate, like an entire separate pay scale, which is kind of what we got away from when, a couple of years ago.
So.
I would, that's what I would have to do. I'd have to move people to different pay scales.
Well, I think what they're, is, sorry, real quick, now I'm done.
Go ahead.
Uh, when we done our last seven percent last year, even the director of schools got seven percent on a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Added to it. And I think that's what the issue is.
Yeah.
Is when you start getting in those higher, higher, higher administrative, more expensive money, getting the seven percent, just like the first year students getting.
So we have the entire.
I think that's what they're talking about.
For, for, uh, certified employees. What, what is, what's included in certified employees?
Um, so certified is your, obviously your regular instruction teachers, your special ed teachers, your occasional teachers. Your guidance counselors, your librarians, your assistant principals, your principals, your supervisors up here. Nurses.
Did you say counselors?
I didn't.
So everybody in the central office is, is on that same pay scale?
Everybody.
We, we are because that, we, there used to be a supervisor pay scale and that went away about what, three, three or four years ago? We consolidated the supervisor pay scale. And it, it became one pay scale because that's what most districts have. They have one certified pay scale.
So you would have to, if you wanted to break that apart, you'd have to break apart the teachers separate from everybody else. In order to do that, we'd have to, um.
Supervisor part, which is possible. As in principal and assistant principal? Is that what's considered supervisor or are we talking about central office?
Assistant principals are not considered supervisors.
They're all on the same scale though. Everyone's on this, everyone certified's on the same scale.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just on the, yeah.
That was done, I don't know, three, three years ago, two, three years ago.
Yeah, it was all busted apart and all the steps and everything.
Because before that, and I'm not like, you know, obviously your, you know, guys can tell me what you guys want me to do. But it was a, it was a payroll mess, like, because we had three different scales. Actually, we have four because classified's broken into two because it's so big. We had four scales and we were trying, I mean, to, you'd have to, every time you have a payroll year, you have to go manually load each person on the scale they're on. Where, when we have one certified scale, we have, we upload that to everyone certified.
I, I got a question. Here's y'all's pay scale. How can we have so many supervisors?
I, that's not for, I don't, I didn't make that decision. I don't know, like, I don't, I don't approve positions. I just manage the budget.
Well, you're, you're talking about supervisors. I think this is the, this is everybody's biggest problem. On the first page right here, we got four supervisors.
Like I said, I didn't approve those positions. I just managed the budget. The, the board would have had to approve those positions at some point in time.
Okay, so do we think we can do three percent, well, three percent across the board for, for certified?
I really think so. Uh, like I said, I haven't, our number, our number of students hasn't decreased that much. So our funding should go up, um, based on the new base.
Here's, here's my concern, my personal concern, you know, is basically what Mr. Shore said is, you know, a percentage, when you do a percentage. You know, the people at the low end of the scale are getting a lot less and the people at the higher end, the scare are getting a lot more. And it's, you know, and that, every, with every percentage increase, that disparity increases, so.
Yeah, so a lot, if you look at our central office, a lot of those people are degreed. And they're your highest experienced people because that's who you want running, that's who you want running the office. And so obviously, yes, they make more because they're on the higher year of the scale.
Right.
So whatever raise you give them, that's gonna be more than.
Right.
You know, someone who's non-degreed that's working in a classified position.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's true.
But we also did a seven percent through everybody last year, which is, you know, at least, at least twice inflation rate, so.
That central office employees are not on the same pay scale as certified or?
That's correct, so, um.
That would be a totally different load for you, right?
Supervisors are on, uh, the same pay scale as a certified employee. And then like if they're, if, if they're in a classified position, so like my finance ladies, they're on the finance scale. And that's on a classified scale. And then, um, there's a scale for like teachers assistants, that all teacher assistants are on in the schools. And then there's a scale for all custodians, head custodians and assistant custodians and bus drivers. So there's like, there's specific jobs within the classified scale. And it's like, all those have different pay rates.
Okay, so you can, you, you could change it based on the scale that you were putting the, the data in for, right?
You mean as far as like breaking apart the?
Like if one group didn't get the three percent or got more or got less, like you can change that number based on the different scale that you're putting it in for?
So it's a little easier for classified to do that because they're on a different, like they already have a scale set up. So like, in my payroll system, I have, I'm gonna use Kelvin again, cause he's sitting in front of me and I can look at him. He's my head custodian that eats coffee. He's, he's assigned in his job, head custodian. That job is linked to head custodian pay scale. So basically when I put together whatever raises are given, I adjust those pay scales with the raises. And I send those to our software company and they load those. So each specific job is loaded on that scale into our system. So like, those are easy. Cause if, like if you wanted to give a four percent to this one and a three percent to that one, I would just change each line. But as far as certified, they're all linked to one. And so everyone is on the certified pay scale.
Even central office employees are on the certified?
Just the cert, just the certified, so just supervisors, just supervisors. Classified employees are linked to the classified.
So are we gonna see all of that in a proposed budget?
What do you mean all of that?
Like every raise in the system. Are we gonna see, are we gonna get a listing of all of that to approve?
So what I usually do is, that is done. So if you're talking about a supervisor at each area of the central office, that is a separate line in the budget. Most of them are a separate line in the budget by themselves. So you can visibly see what that's gonna be. There is one area in the budget that has three or four supervisors in it. So that will be a little more difficult. Um, and then, um, as far as classified, they're all grouped together. So like, you're gonna see a group of like all teachers and students. Um, in one area of the budget. And then, like, so I've have to, so for like supervisors, I have to calculate, I have a calculation sheet that I have to do. That is what y'all have. And so what, when we load salaries for anyone that has a supplement, so anybody that has a supplement, I have to calculate them on a spreadsheet. To make sure what we've entered, what we've loaded and what we've entered is correct. And what the payroll company has loaded on the pay scale. I have to, we have, we, we have a three check system. We load it and then three people check it to make sure we've actually not messed anybody up. So for me to put that spreadsheet together for three different pay raises would be hard.
So is the raise calculated on base pay or on their total pay? Includes all the supplements and modifiers?
So basically it's on base pay and then that gives us their new daily rate and that daily rate is calculated. Um, so like it'll be their base pay and then their fifteen, so you're talking about a supervisor. Their base pay will increase by three percent and then if they have a multiplier, that multiplier is calculated on that new base pay.
Right, I think we voted for that, uh, a couple of years ago to do it as a specific.
And then their extra days are, you take those two amounts, the new base pay and their supplement amount. You divide it by two hundred days and then you multiply it by, say they're two fifty-seven. Well, that would give you their new salary.
Okay.
How many teachers are not making fifty thousand?
I think he has the list.
Thirty, so, thirty, and so how much money would it take to get them to fifty?
Seventy-one thousand, if there is.
So to me, that just, I don't want to just get them up to fifty thousand and go on fire away.
Well, we can, but the problem is it messes our pay scale up. And then the second problem is we have to spend a certain amount of money. From TISA requires us to spend an amount of money on certified raises. Like there, when, when our final estimate comes out, it'll, or our March or April estimate, it'll say, so like last year it was like five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And I had to prove to them that we spent five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in raises. So we're, we're required to spend a certain amount with it.
Anyway, outside of this, so do it and then.
To bump them up to fifty on some of these would be like a five or six percent. You know, but that wouldn't mean that we would want to do that for everybody.
Right, yeah, that's what, that's my.
But that would meet that requirement.
That's what I'm, I mean, this is a one-time thing.
But I don't know, you know, I don't want to mess the accounting system up either.
Yeah, but.
As you go up, but you have a salary grid that's based on years of experience. As you go up, but you have a salary grid that's based on years of experience and degrees, so it's basically a grid, so basically.
But that goes out of the way since the state's requiring us to do this.
Yeah, we're gonna make a new grid anyway. And, right, right now, they're below the grid, the minimum on the grid, so we're gonna have to make a new grid.
But if somebody's at, you know, with multiple years of experience and they're making fifty thousand, then, you know, you kind of, I mean, you could.
Not right now, I don't, I don't wanna do that right now.
If you make a new, if you make a new salary schedule, that has to be done before a budget can be done, because I can't build, I have to have a proof. I know, I'm just saying.
What, what timeframe would we expect that to come through, you know, to, to us?
So, basically, I try to get it ready, um, the big things will be the next board meeting, I'll let you guys, I'll have to know all of that. And then funding, when I know funding, I can start looking at raise, like, what, what potential raise we could give. Um, but I typically try to give that out in an email, like, I try to send you guys out the budget.
Okay.
Um, at least two weeks before we go, I try to, it just depends on if budget requests, we talk about, but we get time to talk about budget requests, if there's last minute.
Usually around spring retreat.
Teachers we need to add, like, we, we try to scrub, if I get a last minute report from the trustee's office that has new revenue numbers, like, I try to scrub it just as much as I can and get it as clean as I can to give to you guys before, so, I usually try two weeks, sometimes it's ten days. Um, so, I usually send in an email, and then I'm open to questions, I'm open for you to come in and sit with me, I prefer that, you know, you guys have, I'd rather explain it to you. You know, maybe we can work through an issue and have, you know, a, our discussion here.
This is just my first round at any of this, so I'm just trying to, you know, figure out, like, when to expect.
It's gonna be, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope so, I'm, I hope so.
Thank you for being so open and answering all our questions, we appreciate it, because you've really.
Anytime, I'm here to answer any, it's just, I know it's really hard, if you haven't done a school budget or seen one, it's really hard to understand, and I, and I get that, because I came from a non-school world, so for me to build a budget, I was here three months when I built my first budget.
We go to T S, we go to T S B A last week, and then they tell us something totally different, so.
What do they tell you?
That it didn't have to be connected to the, 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 the. The, the central office didn't have to be connected to the system, to the, to their teachers and what.
You can have fifteen or twenty pay scales, they don't have to be.
Yeah.
That's just the way this board votes it.
They don't, we just chose to make sure everybody grew, yeah.
Yeah.
And, so that's.
That was fair.
That's one of the huge, is us new guys up.
I will start with a three percent, because that's what we need to try to get there.
All right.
But I will also, if the, if the budget looks okay, I will build another, another couple of options as well.
All right.
You'll have about three options to look at.
All right, all right. Thank you for that confusing, sorry about that. Um, all right, policy committee. We had this on the agenda, Melissa, we were gonna talk about the chair, I think, we, we made.
Is that, and that's gonna go on the, um, my agenda, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so we were going to, uh, talk about the chair, I think, we, we voted, we voted on policy committee changes in the last board meeting, and we moved to make it, uh, you know, kind of affirmative, four board members, three, um, principals, um, and then the, the chair would be a, um, board member. So, that was just, did we need to talk about anything here about that?
It'll have to be ready on Tuesday, I assume.
Is the board member gonna be the fifth person on the board or the fourth person on the board? Chairman, the chairman, is that gonna be a fifth position or one of the four on the board?
I think we generally have up to, well.
I'm just asking.
We don't have four of them, you know, in the committee, so.
How many's on the policy committee right now?
Uh, the policy?
Four.
Four.
Is there four on it right now?
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the entire, I know there's four.
It's seven, it would be seven.
Yeah.
Three principals, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so, well, they could pick who their three principals are also.
Well, that's the.
Would it be the same?
Well, the director was gonna say who.
Usually the director appoints the.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, uh, three principals, and I think Dr. Anderson, we do middle school, elementary school, and, and, and Mr. Parsley.
And one of the best, that were the three principals serving this year.
Yeah. But then we'd need to decide who the committee chair is, and.
And who all is on it, um, Robert, Frida, um.
Are you on policy? Are you on policy? You're on policy, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's your four.
Uh, so, is it one of those gonna be the chair?
Would be the chair, yeah.
No, don't say it, I don't wanna hear it. I don't wanna hear it.
Most experienced.
Do that very well.
Dr. Gilly?
Yeah.
Nope.
What?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, if you have your chair being one of the four, and there's a vote, then, I mean, it's gonna be a three and three. Chair would have to, we, we split vote all the time?
No, how many you got? How many, how many we got?
Seven.
Four and three.
Or the three.
No, no, your chair is just like in the board here, your chair votes to bust a tie. Nine times out of ten, the chair only votes in preliminary procedure unless it's to make or break a motion.
Yes, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
But just like on the board.
So, they wouldn't, more likely, they wouldn't vote, more than likely, they wouldn't vote unless they're to break or make a.
Right.
Pass or fail.
So, also.
Now, we do here, and we always have here, the chair is always voted.
The reason being, because the chair represents a district within this system.
Exactly, and that's a reason why, so they have the same.
So, another question is, do, do principals have the right to vote on these items now under these new guidelines?
I don't think they, I don't think they had it even before.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, in the last board meeting, it was discussed, and I think voting on that, they would not be voting members.
No, 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 we, we decided that they were, they would be, yeah, we didn't change that.
Yeah, it's, it's all, I think it's a majority of the committee.
Yeah, that was what we did. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't, yeah, I don't.
Ministers have had the right to vote in the past.
Yeah, I don't.
And I, I think that's why, I think it's still good.
I don't think that changed.
Mr. Gilly made the motion.
That didn't change, I don't.
Well, y'all, we.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I just leave here, I don't work.
So, I guess the next policy committee, you're just gonna need to decide on the chair, so, so it'll be one of these four, so. All right.
Oh, did we say, what did we say?
Please wait on you to get back.
Yeah, whatever the minutes say.
Yeah, whatever the minutes say.
What took you so long?
It says, uh, reorganization of the policy committee. Robert Gilly made the motion to officially change the structure of the policy committee members to include four board members and three school system employees. The s, employees will be selected by the director of schools, and the chairman of the committee is to be one of the four board members. Frida Jones seconded the motion, the motion passed seven to zero.
Yep.
So, it's everybody gets a vote.
Everybody gets a vote, and I would say next committee, next policy committee meeting, you, you schedule one, and, and then you decide the chair there, so.
So, now, would that go before the board meeting, though, in March? Because we do all the committee meetings there, and we've appointed them all at the board meetings.
We're not changing.
Just pick one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we gotta vote on that personally, but, uh.
Yeah, no, they can call it, who, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we, we, we selected, we, we chose that committee members aren't changing.
Okay.
So, I don't, you know, and you can.
You pick a date, Miss Melissa.
Me?
Yeah, we don't have a chairman, so you pick a date when you're available that'll have a policy committee meeting, we'll have the first instead of chair.
Careful what you ask for, right, Melissa?
About nine-thirty on the twenty-sixth.
Uh, uh, maybe, maybe not, I'm not guaranteeing nothing.
All right, let's move on.
If I'm not there, you can't elect me.
Timeliness of agendas, and this is just, you know.
That's when we can let you, Robert.
Good policy, so we're.
Yeah, or grab the microphone.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
Timeliness of agendas, we talked about that, is getting the agendas out five days before the meeting, and.
That was about staying on that.
Making sure that the materials were available, so board members have anything they wanna discuss, get it on the agenda, and always good to read everything before you come into the board meeting, so we can be prepared to discuss it, I guess that's.
Yes, I usually try to send everything out the Wednesday before the Monday meeting, um, and I send all the ver, you know, all the documents and paperwork and all of that, and then I'm sending you guys the minutes for you guys to help me make sure everything's good on them, and.
All right.
Just trying to.
Over here, the draft.
Open that communication.
The draft minutes, or, or the minutes before, okay. And then, last item is, and I don't think we really need to even discuss it, but it's, well, two items left, I guess. There is, Melissa made everybody a copy of the, did she make everybody a copy? No.
Uh-uh.
Oh, she's gonna send it out to everybody.
Yeah, I can send that out.
She will email it, this is the hot off the press, director salaries twenty-four, twenty-five for Tennessee. So, you can get an idea of what, uh, what the directors are, are making for the state. So, Melissa will send that out to everybody by email, and we gotta kinda decide a salary range pretty soon, so.
Can anybody log into their T S B A? Like, can you log into it?
I tried, but I ran off in the ditch when I, going by what you sent me today.
I don't know the password, so.
I think I did, not too long ago, when I had to, there was something that, that I didn't do.
I need to see if we can get you all set up, because if you can log into your T S B A, it is a world of, of knowledge out there. It has all the, they just came out with a new, uh, salary database for across the, uh, state. So, it has every county, every position that we, that we're counting, or that we have on our website. It's on there, uh, there's podcasts, so many things to help. So, I will get with Liz Mora and see what we can do about that, about figuring out how to get everybody set up.
Well, I can get in, I can get into mine.
You can't, yeah, I mean, it's mine, it's yours.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep.
So, y'all just might not have logged in, because Chris can get in, he's new, but he's logged in.
All right.
Something can do.
Last item is, in your packet, you have the, um, a memo and a, a resolution that will be on the, uh, March board meeting agenda to, uh, this is kind of a weird deal, because the state is gonna give us two thousand dollars for bonuses for teachers, but we need to pass a resolution to accept the money, so.
What we do, and we need to make, what you're doing is making a resolution, saying you agree with the law that was passed.
Right. That's the truth.
And keep in mind, too, that that's the only teachers that are paid by the state, that's not the ones that we pay above the state.
Well, but that could help mitigate an offset, like.
Right.
But that wouldn't count towards the salary.
No, that's just a.
Only one-time bonus.
Yeah, that's a one-time bonus.
Okay.
One-time payout.
So, that doesn't go on annual salary.
And I know at the T S B A, we had one county that stood up and said they were gonna make a, a, a motion at their board meeting that they would, they would accept the money, but they were not going along with the.
Exactly. Mm-hmm, they didn't agree with the.
It's kind of a blackmail thing, you.
Right, if you'll say that, that, that you agree to it, then we'll give you some money.
Right.
I thought it was gonna just be given to everybody, you know, and that's, that's sad.
That should never have been given anything, that was free.
And then the teachers are gonna get.
We'll have it on the agenda, but everybody's gonna need to go back and look in the law, see if they.
Because I don't know where the funding, how we'll get the funding for it.
It's built in, oh, yeah, I don't know, but it's built in.
The state's gonna provide it.
No, it's built in through the.
Speak their words.
Through the, yeah, what they approved for that, supposed, that's what they said.
Yeah.
Sort of like a lump sum to us?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's a one-time.
I don't know anything about it.
All right.
It's kinda like playing, playing spin the bottle, you know?
Don't, don't spin the ball like.
You got a fifty-fifty shot.
On the, on the, no, I.
The resolution and the two thousand dollars and everything, y'all have it, or?
Yeah.
I think it's in our emails.
So, it'll be on the agenda, we'll, we'll vote on it, we'll discuss it.
Is that for next school year? Is that for this school year, next next? What does it say? That'll have to be in the budget.
I don't know when, when they was talking, I think that would, my understanding, it would, yeah, be the coming school year.
Yeah, maybe the next year, when that, when the program, when the voucher program takes place.
Yeah.
Okay.
When it do affect.
Okay.
Microphone.
I do have one more question, um.
Wrong you. That's a wrong you.
The daycare, um.
We may need to order a breakfast, but.
I know. So, on, uh, September, uh, uh, September of twenty-twenty-four, uh, Jennifer made the motion that we would revisit the daycare program in March, and I think Ms. Yinch, uh, seconded it. So, uh, that will.
September?
To March, so it'll be needing to come up on this board meeting, so we kinda need to think about what you wanna do on that. I know we've talked about the after-school program.
Oh, that's it, yeah, yeah.
Um.
The daycare, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Sizmore did that, um.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, she had reached out to people, but then when she reached out, it really wasn't a good time, because they'd already found babysitters for the school year. So, that's something I just wanted to see, kinda put it out there that.
Does Ms., has Ms. Sizmore done any surveying or anything to see if that's something?
Well, she didn't want to just send the surveys out if that was something that you guys were not even interested in, she said she could send another survey out.
Yeah, I would, because we're gonna need to survey to.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to have her send one out, okay.
To see if there's anybody.
Viability, yeah.